Good evening. Calling to order the previous school committee meeting, Monday, May 16, 2023. The time is 6:00 p.m. We'll all rise and salute the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Garcia, would you call the roll?
Mr. Stacy Bronson Rizzo.
Absent.
Mr. Michael Ferranti.
Here.
Mr. John Kingston.
Here.
Ms. Alicia Milbury Ellis.
Present.
Ms. Jacqueline Monterosso.
Present.
Ms. Carol Ty.
Here.
Acting Mayor Patrick Keefe.
Here. First order, second order of recognition. We have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The school committee had requested at their last meeting that we recognize the cast and crew of In the Heights, who you can see are filing in now. I want to tell the people behind them, if they'd like, there are plenty of seats up front there, if you want to come and sit down. So we have a number of certificates we're going to give out. And then after that, we have Sarah Humus, who is currently the principal of the Lincoln School, who I wanted to introduce to the committee as our new executive director of special education. So we will start with our friends from In the Heights. And I'm going to ask Christina Meniscian to come up with me and help me recognize if any students are absent as I read the certificates, okay? And I should also recognize our director of fine arts, Kelly Williams, who is here also. I'm like, I knew I just saw her somewhere. And of course, Ms. Meniscian, who is the absolute hero in all of this, am I right? And I know she had other heroes who worked with her, like Ms. Petty and Mr. Godbout, and I'm sure a million other people that I won't try to name because there were so many people involved. But this was such an amazing production. And I know that it touched the hearts and the minds of the students who were involved, but it touched the hearts and the minds of everybody else as well. I had people from all over the state calling me and saying, oh, my God, your kids are so amazing. And I'm like, I know, right? So it was so awesome. You really, really are the pride of Revere, and we're very thankful to have the opportunity to work with all of these brilliant minds. And when you become famous artists on Broadway or in L.A. or wherever, please remember us. Follow Lin-Manuel Miranda's example and reach back to the people who need to hear from you and see you as a leader and an example for them. Do you want to say anything before I?
No.
Okay. All right. The award reads, certificate of recognition presented to, and then it'll be the person's name, "For the invaluable team effort and contributions to Revere High School's first musical in 30 years. Your selfless dedication, hard work, and generosity to bring In the Heights to our stage have made a significant impact, and we are grateful." And then it's hashtag remember to be a community. And it's signed by acting Mayor Keefe and myself on behalf of the school committee. So. Guadalupe's absent?
Yes.
Okay. Jose Aparicio not with us tonight. Okay. Emily Arden. Do you guys want to shake hands? Santiago Gil Benfort. Evelyn Bulger, another one of our staff support. Emily Buss. Sarai Saquintes. Iago De Silva.
Thank you so much.
Adriana De Chico, sorry. Patrina Flores. Wayne Godbout. Wendy Gutierrez. Jacoby Joseph. We'll practice that before you graduate. Wasila Mohammed. Danielle Mello. Kevin Morales. Anathan Moran. Okay. Lonnie Nova. Alyssa Oliveira. Olivia, sorry. Yanni Patel. James Petty. Tina Petty. Oh, she is here. I did not see you hiding back there.
Hi.
Congratulations. Nice to meet you too, Tina. Jonathan Plouffe. DeAndre Kijada-Guevara. Brian Ramirez. Sofia Restrepo. Harrison Ruah. Kwani Souza. PJ Strackman. Alec Waugh. Sam Wick. And Leah Zuniga.
Can we try to get a picture of the kids?
We could try.
So when you guys are famous, because my little girls are like, you guys are like the cats meow. Try to get a picture.
Let's try.
Come up front here. Thank you. I know there's a lot, but that's okay. We can squeeze in.
And me, a parent, I think we might have skipped right over your certificate, but congratulations and thank you for everything that you did for the flag.
Dr. Garcia's the end over here.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not shilling for the credit union, but the credit union has an office at the high school. And yesterday, I was sitting in my chair, and you all walked by coming from the State House. And I just want to publicly thank Representative Jessica Gignino and Jeff Turco for inviting you folks to the State House. I heard you had a blast. I saw the smiles on your face when you were coming back in the building. And I just want to publicly thank them for having you go to the State House and participate in all that. And I know it was something you might remember for a very long time. So I just wanted to publicly thank the two of them. And also, you two wonderful teachers that helped you. They went above and beyond. I know they did. I know one had a little mishap, and she was out for a little bit, and she came back and worked really hard, and I'm very proud of all of you. Thank you.
One last person probably to talk to you all, but it was really special to sit in the second row and just watch all of you. And I definitely had chills throughout the play, and my eyes definitely watered a few scenes, just because the story of the play is my story, and I know it's a story that many of you share. So I just wanted to thank you not only for showing that in the performance, but being willing to share your culture, your story, and your language with all of us. Thank you.
Ms. Ty.
I've been around this school system for more than 60 years, and I can tell you that there has never, never been anything like this. Never. I will never forget what you did. I might not know you individually, but that was the best thing about what you did. You were such a cohesive group. And I've watched Ms. Meniscian all the way through when she was trying, first going to the SUSE and B and trying hard to get everything. And to watch this success, I tell you, it warms my heart, and I thank you very much for this wonderful memory. Thank you.
Ms. Ellis.
Yeah, I echo my colleagues' sentiments as well. I have to say, I am a huge theater buff. I love Broadway shows. I took my girls to see Hamilton in New York last year. And I have to say, when I was asked about your performance, I said it was like going into town. I mind all of that in Boston, at any theater, watching any performance, because it was top-grade professional. You should be so, so proud of yourselves. You all, I mean, if this is a testament that you could do anything at all that you put your minds to, anything, go anywhere, be anyone, and do anything at all that you want to. And I just pray that each of you reach your fullest potential, and you know you're happy in life, and you continue to make other people happy like you did for your show. Thank you.
Well, I've been able to experience this full circle, and I know that the impact, and not to single anyone out, but Ms. Meniscian, I have a picture of you with my daughter when she was in sixth or seventh grade. And she was not much shorter than she is now, but the impact you had on her and the impact the arts programs in our city has had on my children is unbelievable. But what made that come full circle since when I witnessed firsthand with The Lion King six, seven, eight years ago, was to see the change in Revere, but also see the positive change. And the In the Heights show is much more reflective of the Revere we have now. And this is who we are. We should always embrace it. I'm very proud that this was a show that meant so much to the people in this room. But it meant a lot to the residents of Revere. They needed this, the high school needed this. And it was so exciting that this was the coming out after 30 years of not having production at the high school. So I don't think that anyone could have picked a better time and a better program. So I'm very proud to see what this represents to our city. So thank you very much for your work. And Allison Woneland, June 1st and 2nd. Don't forget.
We also have Clue at Garfield Middle.
Pardon me.
On May 25th.
Go ahead. All right, we'll leave you alone. Thank you. Thank you. Great job. And just so we can clear the room, if you'd like, you can stay all night.
Oh, they're part of your presentation?
Oh, they're part of your presentation? All right. Next item, Sarah Humus.
There are plenty of open chairs. Yeah, there's some chairs if you guys want to sit down in the front if you're staying.
Ms. Humus.
So I just want to introduce briefly, as the school committee knows, since you graciously approved the budget allocations for the redesign of our special education program. And I had informed the committee that I have appointed Ms. Humus as the new executive director of special education and student services for the Revere Public Schools. You all know her from her work at the Lincoln School, but just as part of our recognition piece, I want to give her an opportunity to introduce herself again to all of you in the context of her new role.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly, and good evening, school committee and audience members. I am so excited about this new position and so very grateful. Recently, Dr. Gulucci asked for a leadership quote for an activity that we're going to be doing during our professional development. And instantly, I thought of the quote from the book Leadership on the Line by Ronald Heffetz and Marty Linsky. It states that exercising leadership is a way of giving meaning to your life by contributing to the lives of others. At best, leadership is a labor of love. And it is with this quote in my mind and in my heart that I will proceed. And I look so forward to collaborating with all the stakeholders to continue to build an aligned and cohesive department that works to serve all children and families in a way that, in which they feel heard, respected, and truly included in the decision-making process. I will so greatly miss the students, staff, and families at the Lincoln School, but I'm also so tremendously excited to be, to continue to support them and in addition to all the members of the Revere Public School community and this new position. Thank you.
Does anyone, any questions? Ms. Ty?
Good question.
You good? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Humus.
So where we have the performers in here, do we want to take the superintendent report out of order?
Whatever the, we love the committee.
Yes.
I have to be here.
All in favor?
Yes.
They have school tomorrow.
I know. So we'll go out of order, and I'll invite Ms. Williams up to do the fine arts presentation. And if you'll give me one second, I'm going to get this loaded.
You can go to the first slide. So I'm just going to present on basically what we've done this year and what's to come for next year. This slide is just a quick, brief highlights of some of our student work from this year. A couple of things that have gone on, we've had lots of displays throughout the buildings. We had a production at SBA of Decades, so there's some pictures from that. Garfield, our teacher Danielle O'Connell held her now annual, she started last year, Glow Gallery, as well as our production of Matilda that took place at The Hill. Next slide. These are a few new murals to our buildings. As you might be aware, the school committee had funded a artist to paint a mural at CityLab. That's the one on the right, by David Ogara. And the one on the left is by a student, senior Lawrence Santos. That's down by my office, down by the music room. We had a really successful rock ensemble show this year. It serviced about 15 students throughout the whole year. We had two really successful shows. They featured Radiohead this year, and then we also, which was great, during those shows, RMA percussion ensemble performed, the Garfield Middle School Rock Band, and the SBA Rock At CityLab, there is a partnership going on, some of you might be aware, with Artists for Humanities. The students participated traveling off-campus to Artists for Humanities, and they partnered by making 30 paintings. So it's a course where they were learning to paint and partnered with artists. The partnership included an eight-week session of two-hour paintings that, in South Boston, they did a design, a sketch, and a painting session. Seven students currently are employed now by the Artists for Humanity, and this will continue next year with a partnership, and they're going to get to dive into some other forms of art, not just painting next year. My picture doesn't show up on that one. That's okay. You can keep going. Over at the RMA, we have an art teacher, Katie Carlato, that partnered with the library this year. She took her art students to the library, and they created posters that designed the word "read" to hang up in the community, hang up at the library and in their school, to illustrate the books that they like. But also, some of the posters aren't finished yet, but they summarize in different languages, the word "read" in lots of different languages. So that's what the SBA Art Club worked on. All my pictures aren't, oh, this must be because my version to Robin was an earlier version, but that's okay. So our, we had our district-wide art show, which was a success for some of you that were there, was there. You can keep going. So our community collaboration, I added a little bit to this, so I'm just going to read off my notes. The high school has partnered a few times this year with the Senior Center. Some of our students have gone and done some painting projects there with the Senior Center. And they actually have reached out, they are asking for some students to come. They got approval to paint a mural there, so they're looking to partner with us again. Students at Revere High School visited the Museum of Fine Arts this year, and students at The Hill, fifth-grade students visited the Gardner Museum, and second-grade students visited the Cape Anne Museum. And they participated in a printmaking workshop at that museum. We currently have a grant with, oh, sorry, what? You can keep it here, but we currently have a grant with the city, with some high school students that are working with Wayne Godbout. He's an ELA teacher at Paul Revere. He also happens to be a graffiti artist. And so he is working with a group of students from the high school. There is a student from CityLab and is actually an eighth-grade student. And they have a grant, and they're going to create a mural in the city, but they're also fixing the mural that's at Garfield on the side that's facing the baseball field. And that grant also has allowed them to do a street art tour in Salem. They had some guest artists come in and visit with the group, as well as, they took a graffiti class in Beverly, where you can go, and they have like walls that you can practice on. And then they began painting this past Saturday, the Garfield mural. And I have Krista Benedetto and Siobhan Keplin here today with some students to talk to you about our Revere Youth Singers.
Good evening. My name is Siobhan Keplin. I am the elementary music teacher at Garfield. We, the six elementary specialists in music, when we knew that COVID was on its way out and that we could perform again publicly, we wanted to do something that brought everybody back together. And voices are free, and especially young voices have so much joy. So we chose to create the Revere Youth Singers. And this was our first year ever. We had 100 students enrolled from the six elementary schools, and the six teachers chose songs. We taught everyone the same song, and then thanks to Kelly's really hard work, we were able to have a live rehearsal at The Hill School in February so that the children could meet each other, which is wonderful, because all the students are in fourth and fifth grades. So it gives them the opportunity to make a friend or two who they might see when they head to middle school. So we figured with the social and emotional needs of our students, that coming together with music would be a great way to heal. And I know Chris has something to add.
I would just like to say that it's been an incredible opportunity to also see how we can grow a program at the elementary level that can help to feed the program that we see hopefully coming to the middle more, more robustly, and to hopefully the high school very soon, because it's in all forms. It's in everybody that's out here who sang in In the Heights, and their ability to be able to perform starts with those foundational things. We're just looking at a way to provide a bigger choral opportunity for them in addition to a lot of the robust theater that we have going on as well. The one thing that I observed that I thought was great, and this happened actually right in our, in the picture that Ms. Williams has from our rehearsal, was as chaotic as that all was, it was amazing to see in a very unique way, fourth and fifth graders coming together and working collaboratively, kindly, inviting, where most of them are in their own little communities, their own little neighborhoods, getting an idea of what it's like to work with people that they may not know, especially for fifth graders who will be eventually transitioning to the middle school level and getting that kind of experience and that comfort level as they go along. So if Bradley or Andrea, who are possibly willing to say anything if they want to, but it's okay if you guys are just, yeah, you're good.
Do you want to say what, how you felt when you were a part of the Revere Youth Singers? They also performed for the first time at the district art show. They were there first time. They had a rehearsal in February, and hopefully next year, we can do more than one rehearsal. But they got to go in the bus and go to The Hill School and work with their peers. Did you want to talk, say something about your experience? No?
It's okay. That's not a problem.
We appreciate you coming.
Yeah. I just want to mention that there's that lovely crossover, because both Andrea and Bradley were part of our production of Matilda. And so there's that, there's that kind of crossover between theater and music, especially choral, that has that kind of, you know, synergy that we would love to see continue on into middle and high school. And we think that this is a way of being able to really garner that. So we appreciate all the support from everybody across the board, and especially to our colleagues who we represent here. It really would not be done with the other four elementary music teachers not present. So we thank them as well.
Full team effort.
Yes, 100%. So thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Ellis?
Oh, sorry, I know, I was gonna be quick, but no, I'm quick. So this is, I'll, I'll, I just have a brief thing before and then this will end with this slide. So just coming up for next year or for the summer, I wanted to let everyone know we're having a summer arts program that's gonna be geared towards the high school students. They're going to be able to earn a .5 credit if they attend all 19 days, so ninth through 12th grade. The goal really is to target them because, I don't know if you're aware, ninth and 10th graders haven't been taking arts, which will, that's another change for next year. We're going to, ninth graders will be in art, which is, we'll have more staff next year. It will be a lot, a lot better. Our program will grow, because like Chris was saying, from ninth grade, now from eighth grade coming up, they'll be, be able to enroll in music. And then, so this summer program was really to help prepare and get those students in 10th grade and 11th grade that might not have been able to fit an arts course into their schedule. And also, so for next year, also two things to highlight for our student choice and voices, we're adding an intro to dance class and an intro to fashion design. And that came out of surveying the students' interests for wanting to take dance and wanting to take fashion. And then just to sum up our numbers for next year, we had over 1,300 requests for visual arts. We had over 100 requests for theater arts. And then we had 253 requests for music at the high school level next year. So with your support, we'll be adding the two visual art teachers and a music teacher so that those students can get the courses that they're asking to take. And then we'll end with Ms. Menesian.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christina Menesian and I teach theater at RHS. I also had the honor of directing our recent production of In The Heights, which with much help from my colleague Tina Penny, who's also here this evening. I wanna say a sincere thank you to all of you for the financial support that you provided to us this year. I hope you got a chance to see what an impact the financial support had on our production. And now I'd like you to hear what, if any, impact the production and after-school drama club has had on our students.
Hi, my name is Dina Ofessa. I'm a freshman. I was a featured ensemble member in the production. So coming to RHS as a freshman, I felt a little inferior being the youngest among the rest of the school. And theater was never something I had a very strong feeling towards until I saw auditions for RHS's musical. I knew nothing about In The Heights, but ever since that day, I researched the musical. I practiced the songs and choreo. And not only did Revere Drama help me make new friends, it also helped me discover a passion for something I barely knew I had. Through this drama program, I've grown in ways like being a better singer, actor, but also a better person in traits like cooperation, patience, and confidence. I wanna thank everyone involved, including the staff and other cast and crew members, for giving me and many others an amazing freshman experience. I hope that the new incoming shy freshman like I once was will find their place with RHS Drama in the future. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Valerie, I'm a freshman. I was also a featured ensemble in In The Heights. This show has arisen many, many emotions. I've had to balance many things throughout this process. But I've always prioritized this club because of how much fun and how rewarding it is, as you could see, like how much fun we were having throughout it all. Academics were really important to me, but I've always prioritized this club. And every day, I had a smile on my face coming into the school, knowing that I'm gonna see my castmates and everybody after school. It was so much, so much fun. I'm so proud to have been in this group. I'm so impressed with Ms. Williams and Ms. Menesian's way to direct throughout this whole process. To me, they're like a beacon of hope for anyone in the school wanting to join theater. People like them make this possible for us kids. Again, big thank you to everybody that was part of this. It means so much to me.
Buenas tardes, soy Paulina y participé como Yolanda y lead dancer. El club de drama La Escuela ha sido un grupo de apoyo, de amistad, de altibajos y también de felicidad. Al principio no estaba segura de querer entrar al club pues no hablaba casi inglés. Y ya poco tiempo en la escuela, me sentía sola y desorientada. Recuerdo que mis primeras palabras hacia la mis manes fueron, "I don't speak English." Las mismas palabras de Yolanda. Y me sentí segura cuando ella me entendió y mis compañeros me apoyaron y me aceptaron. Ni sabía que trataban musical, la verdad. Pero entré con miedo de no poder hacer las cosas. Cada vez que avanzábamos me sentía más identificada. Pues trataba sobre la comunidad latina y no me podía sentir más orgullosa representando a los latinos y a los que hemos tenido que pasar por el duro proceso de adaptarnos en otro país. Ah, y Carnaval del Barrio, esa canción que me recuerda mi tierra y que debo estar siempre orgullosa de ser latina y colombiana. Esa canción que me sacó muchas lágrimas. Y me tocó el corazón. Ese musical fue todo un éxito y agradezco por la gran oportunidad de hacer no solo un musical, sino también un grupo de amigos y por permitirnos a cada uno de nosotros recordar de dónde venimos y que siempre hay un lugar para todos en el mundo. Mil y mil gracias.
So to translate what she said. Good afternoon, I'm Paulina. I participated as Yolanda and a featured dancer. The RHS Drama Club has been a part, has been a group of support, friendships, ups and downs, but also happiness. At first, I wasn't sure if I wanted to enter the club because I didn't speak any English and I'd been in the school for a short time. I felt alone and disoriented. But I entered with fear of not being able to do things. Every time we moved forward, I felt more identified because it is about a Latin community. I could not feel more proud representing Latinos and those who have had to go through the hard process of adapting in another country. Oh, and Carnaval del Barrio. It's a song that reminds me of my land and that I must always be proud. It's not only a musical, but also a group of friends. And it allows us to remember where we come from and that there is always room for everyone in the world. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Juliana Marchesi and I played Vanessa in our show of In The Heights. And my experience in producing a show with these people has brought a tremendous amount of benefits into my life. I've always loved musical theater and the arts in general, but never had an outlet or a space for it, really. Before being, giving this opportunity to do the show, I was and still am very shy and introverted. However, In The Heights has helped me find my family and has built this sense of community where I can just be myself and enjoy these people who love the same things as I do. They've given me a home and are the reason I was able to push through rough days and keep going. Without these people or this experience, I can say with certainty that I would not be where I am today. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Arden. I was a lead singer and featured dancer. And joining RHS Theater has given me an experience and an opportunity like no other. I always felt like I didn't have a place where I could just go, where I could express myself and do the things that I love and enjoy doing and just feel confident about myself. But now we have a second home, one we have built within this program, where everyone can join and be who they are and celebrate the things that make them happy. I've never felt more welcome and accepted and able to just open up and be myself than in this cast. This show has given me something to look forward to during and after school. Being a part of this cast has been one of the best things that's ever happened to me. The thrill of being on that stage and rehearsing with everybody is what made me realize my passion for performing and acting.
Hi, I'm Adriana De Chico. I'm a junior and I stage managed this year's production of In The Heights. Being a part of the tech side of the show and stage managing has allowed me to learn a part of theater that I didn't know before. It allowed me to take on a leadership role and to help keep everything organized. And being a part of theater in middle school was an exciting experience. And being able to continue it in high school was even better. It truly helped me to be more comfortable with myself and not be such a shy person. It was interesting, though, going from a school that was filled with theater to one that didn't really have a huge program. So now that we've started this program back up, it allows for future students to carry the legacy and continue this amazing community.
Good evening, my name is Nandi Wilson and I'm a senior here at Revere High School. And I played Abuela in the show. When, having theater up here at RHS has brought me so much, it's brought me so much joy in my life. And when I first moved up here, I was very reserved and didn't really have any friends. And so when I found out about our theater program, I was really happy to have something that made me feel like I belonged at home. And I just felt like welcome again. And so doing In The Heights was the best decision that ever happened to me because I knew that after I made the choice to audition. And just like it brought me to my family and changed my views of support, especially from a loving community, having it here would better our next generation of RHS students the same way it bettered me. They will receive the greatest experiences as I did and so did the cast. And they'll also be open to so much more opportunities that could help highlight how great Revere is altogether. So drama will give them the best positive outlook on life as it gave to me. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Granados and I played Nina in In The Heights. I was told that the question we had here was, "How has drama impacted your life?" In reality, I've been doing drama for a long time now. It's been since fourth grade with Mr. Di Benedetto when we did Suzical. I remember having a little blue dress with feathers attached to a belt and it was one of the best experiences I had. In fifth grade, we did Beauty and the Beast and I played Belle. And then sixth grade, we did a performance in SBA. And then seventh and eighth grade, we didn't have much because of COVID. When I was a freshman here, I was really hoping and looking forward to drama club. And we didn't have that opportunity. But then, when I was a sophomore and Ms. Menes came up and talked to me and she was like, "We're gonna have a production," and I was so ready. I was, I had, oh, you don't understand. I was so excited. And being part of this club, being part of this opportunity was more than I ever wanted. It's, it's been a real, it's, it's something that I love. Ever since I was little, I've been performing. So to be up here and to perform with this amazing group of people, I love everyone here. They have brought in me smiles. And being part of drama club, in the mornings when I had to get ready for school, I just, I could be going through the worst day possible, but knowing that I have drama at the end of the day was just something that I, oh, you don't, it's, I loved it. I could have a headache and it would go away because I'm in drama club. And it's something I love. So that's all, but thank you very much for this opportunity.
Hi, I'm Susie Nicholas. I was a featured singer and dancer in In The Heights. And funny enough, I have a very similar story to Kathy, who made this lie in order. I am someone that has been like hooked on performing since I performed in the seventh grade with Mr. Mafucci's percussion ensemble. And it's, and I've only had so many different opportunities to perform because there's only so many places in our city that like I've gotten the chance to. And as time goes on, we get more and more. And I remember being in middle school in the eighth grade, just waiting to get to high school because of all the opportunities that I knew would be available there. And I remember like specifically approaching Ms. Menesian and asking her this year, at the beginning of the year, if we were gonna have a production. And she told me that we were gonna do In The Heights. And which is something like the, my summer before freshman year, when the movie came out, I became obsessed with it. I had the soundtrack on vinyl and everything. And I was, I was so ecstatic. And it was like everything I dreamed that it would be and more. It was, it just gave me the opportunity and a place to do all the things that I love, singing, acting, performing, and dancing. And it just was a place that you could go and just feel good. Like, and it didn't matter your skill set. It was about making everyone feel included and forming a family and a community. And I can't wait for this community to grow through the years that I continue in high school.
Hi, I'm Sabrina Marquez. I'm a senior this year. I play Daniela. And I always dreamed about being theater, being in theater, acting, and drama. And joining our school drama club was a huge turning point in my life because I felt like I was finally leaving my passion. And be part of the RHS Drama Clubs is an honor. Meeting this amazing people that I deeply relate to and I have grown to love is an honor. And theater has given me a new perspective on community. Seven months ago, I wouldn't spend more, I would spend most of my time by myself. And now I seem to spend all of my time with these theater nerds. And I genuinely love, I genuinely love you guys. Y'all helped me to find my home and for that, I'm so grateful.
I asked Ms. Menesian for a few students to come and just express how drama club, you know, how, what impact it had on them this year, and they all want to come. So if anyone has any questions for me, otherwise, I'm, I'm good.
Ms. Ellis?
So this, the drama club was clearly a success on many levels. I think that these young, talented people basically said it all. I would just like to say that, you know, we strive to, to create relationships and bonds and interests with kids. And I just think this is a shining example of that happening. And it's such a positive influence in their lives. And I look forward to many more years, just as these kids do, with providing these types of opportunities to our kids. So thank you, thank you for all you do. Thank you, kids, for a wonderful performance. And I'm so happy to learn that, you know, this has shaped your lives in more ways than one. I wish you all the best.
Can't, can't wait till the day when our Revere Youth Singers are up on that stage. Except then it'll be a brand-new high school.
We're gonna go back to regular business, that's okay with everyone? Thank you. So number three, the consent calendar. This requires a vote. Move to accept, who are second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Michael Ferranti?
Yes.
Mr. John Kingston?
Yes.
Mrs. Aishen Milbury-Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Jacqueline Onderusso?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Ty?
Yes.
Acting Mayor Patrick Keith?
Yes. Vote is passed.
I do, I just have a question. Is the calendar posted somewhere online for the public to keep track? Because I know the agendas are posted, but like do we have it on our website with the entire year?
So it, it's the consent calendar that the committee is approving, which was what you all discussed during the committee of the whole meeting?
Yeah.
So that's what you were approving was the approval of the minutes? You're actually voting to approve the minutes, to approve the warrants, to approve the financial reports, the food service financials, the communications, the enrollment, and the personnel items?
Okay, not the, uh, okay.
I learned that last week.
Okay, I'll ask the question when it comes in.
Yes. But, but, well, I can answer the question. The other question that you had was if the school year calendar is posted, and it is on the website.
The meeting calendar of the school committee posted?
Oh, yes, yeah.
The entire year.
So it'll be minute, so the fact that we just set the dates for June through December, will be posted the minutes from this meeting? And then the meetings will get posted on the calendar?
Okay.
Thank you. Number four, student representative report.
So our usual Elnie is not here with us this month, but her partner, Rayhan, and our new guest, Eerta, are here to present their report. And I don't know if I have it open yet, I just have to get it up to share. So give me one second to get it on the Zoom. And Rayhan, when you see it over here, it's time, it's good to go.
Sounds good, thank you. So hello, everyone. My name is Rayhan, as Dr. Kelly said, and I'm the junior student representative. And first off, on behalf of the Student Senate and also all students and myself, I'd like to congratulate Ms., Mrs. Montezaro on your appointment, recent appointment. You know, we wish you well wishes and we hope we can collaborate with you and with all the other members as well. Um, you know, we wish you well wishes and we hope we can collaborate with you and with all the other members as well. Um, so with that said, as you guys know, Student Senate is back and we're running stronger than ever. And one of the things that we've been running is a public feedback form, the forum on our social media pages, where students can input or give us feedback on the things that they would like, um, for us to kind of focus on and solve. And one of the things that came up, um, multiple times was transportation. And Eerta Smahili, who is our vice chair, uh, spearheaded this project. So I will let her take the lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Rayhan. Um, hello, everyone. My name is Eerta Eastmaneely. I'm the vice chair of Student Senate here at RHS. And just as Rayhan said, we got, um, submissions from multiple students anonymously that the transportation system at RHS specifically needed changes. And so I spearheaded with my committee, the School Spear and Engagement Committee, um, part of Student Senate to look into edu-, uh, sorry, education of course, but transportation within the city and specifically within RHS. And we specifically looked at, um, as you can see here, the scope of the issue and, you know, students and how they feel it impacts them, along with solutions in other districts and funding that we can look at and also some recommendations that we have. So you could move on to the next slide. Um, I can barely read that, but as you can probably see, we got multiple students saying that there were, you know, issues with transportation and, you know, many specifically noted how they had to pay money to take the T to get to school or to get home or to make it on time for sports and clubs and things like that. And specifically, um, you can see here, thank you so much, um, there's so many students that, that note that, you know, they have other students that they see that live a block over that can't take the bus because of the two mile limit. And of course, that is in the state law. But many students noted how it was kind of unfair that they could have neighbors that couldn't take the bus while they could. Um, and so many students noted on that. And of course, if you go into the next slide, we kind of delve, dive into that further. Um, so we specifically looked at Salem Public Schools. Of course, their, their students, their size is much different. They have like, I don't know, 600 students in, in their high school or like very little in their entire school district as a whole. But if you look at their system, they have a specific, um, kind of unique system, I would say, where they, uh, kind of create their system according to the state law, which say, says that you have to have it um, two miles or more from the school for the high school. However, they have this additional program um, called mandatory riders, or sorry, non-mandatory riders. And it kind of permits students that are within the two miles to take the bus if they need it based on economic status, walkable route access or younger sibling ridership. And so students would basically apply to this program um, through the transportation office and they would approve whether a student can take a bus according to whether the buses had space for them, but also, you know, the different, um, situations that they were in. And if you go to the next slide. So there were specific tiers that they would look at. So applicants had to meet, meet specific amount of tiers in order to make it onto the buses. And we were just looking at some of our questions where could we do this at Revere? We of course have much, like a lot more students, but how could we possibly model this system? To make sure that students that kind of don't have that access but need it could take advantage of the bus. I know for myself, I used to take the bus in middle school and now I don't. I have to walk like 30 minutes to school, 30 minutes home. And it's, it's a pain when I have to take sports and do clubs. I get home at like seven, eight sometimes and it's, it's unsafe. And especially in the winter months, it's, it shouldn't be allowed. And I feel like possibly undertaking a system like this would help students like me kind of lessen the load. So, next slide, please. So this is very unique to Boston Public Schools, but it's just the recommendation and, and, and the sighting that we found was that they're like under Mayor Wu especially, they found a, a kind of partnership with, uh, the MBTA called the M7 cards, which creates free transportation on buses and trains for students aged 11 and up, um, during the school year and then during the summer months. Then it would not become free anymore and they'd have to pay. So this was specifically for all students in high school and 11 and up in the city of Boston. And of course, it's Boston, you know, it's built to be reliant on the metropolitan, you know, system or, or, you know, urban, all that. But in Revere is definitely different. But, um, we do have a lot of buses here. Students take buses. As you noted, uh, previously in the presentation, students had to pay upwards of $30 to go, go to sports sometimes. And if we just look at a system like this, I feel like we can realize a lot. And if you could go to the next slide, please. We specifically have currently S cards, which I myself use, and they reduce the fee of taking the bus and taking transportation. But the M7 passes, um, for schools, they would have to pay $30 per pass a month. And it would provide free, um, you know, transportation among the MBTA for any students, um, that would take the card. And of course, you know, providing this card for all students definitely seems like a lot, but maybe we could figure something out with the new transportation director for MBTA to possibly figure out something for those students that need it. And next slide. This is just kind of background on where the funding comes from. This was the 2023, I believe fiscal year for the, um, city. And there was an increase in funding. As you can see, I believe it's 19.6% highlighted there for people transportation. And so of course, we have a lot of students who are just kind of wondering, could some of this funding be used to help and support those students that need it? And of course, a lot of this funding does come from the state, as you can see from the pie chart. And lastly, no, not lastly, um, almost lastly. So we are recently a part of the Safe Roots to School Funding Program, which I found. And this is a program which almost all the schools, except for the high school, I believe it's not available to high schools. But they're all a part of this program that specifically funds, um, ease of access for walkers and bikers. Um, and basically pedestrians within the city. And so if you can go to the last slide. Our question around that was, what is this funding going? Could we increase the transparency on where, where this funding is going? And how to provide that access for pedestrians, especially for, you know, the city, if it's unsafe, roads and things like that. We're just wondering where that funding is coming from. But our, our other recommendations include that first Salem system as well that, as well as that M7 pass system. So those are our questions for you as well on that page. If you have any questions for me, please let me know.
Yeah, Dr. Kelly?
Thank you, Eerta. This is a wonderful presentation. I'm gonna try to answer some of your questions. So, and I'm actually gonna start with the last one, the Safe Roots to School Program, which is phenomenal. And, um, we've actually been part of that for a long time. I think like 10 years now. And it's Julie DiMauro who works for the city of Revere who oversees that program. And some of the projects that come to mind, um, include the redesign of the crosswalks around the Lincoln School. Um, and a similar redesign of crosswalks down near the Garfield School. Um, the project at the Garfield focused on increasing visibility of the crosswalks by painting them in bright, brilliant colors and butterflies and flowers. It was really pretty cool. Um, at the Lincoln School, the focus was a little bit more on how kids get from Broadway up to the school. Um, and we have the crosswalks would, should be based on, um, where families and students tended to move. Um, we also use Safe Roots to School money, um, under Julie's guidance to do a traffic study here at Revere High School and look at the ins and outs of the parking lot and how many kids are walking versus how many kids are driving or being dropped off and um, all of those pieces. So Safe Roots to School has been a tremendous partner for us. Um, they've done things like fixed sidewalks and I mentioned the crosswalks and curb cuts and things like that that have been really helpful to make the city safer for pedestrian, um, users or members of the community. Um, it is a program that is run by the city of Revere, as is all of our transportation. Uh, it seems a little bit counterintuitive, but municipalities are responsible for transporting kids to and from school. We run that program on behalf of the city because it just makes more sense for us to do that. We know which students are going to which outplace schools uh, and, you know, which students have need for specialized transportation and things like that, that the city wouldn't necessarily have at that information at, uh, the tip of their fingers. So it's easier for us to run the program. But it really is um, a municipal program. And that's why the municipality does things like Safe Roots to School. And they oversee that as opposed to the school department. Um, but definitely we are constantly looking for grant funding. Um, we have never, ever said no to a dollar. I can tell you that much, uh, regardless of what it's targeted toward. Um, and we'll continue to work with the Safe Roots to School Program to continue to improve walkability and, um, rideability for kids on bikes and scooters. Uh, with the M7 pass system, I think that's something that's very interesting. And I know that, um, Boston did implement that for their students, but they also did away with yellow bus transportation from grades, grade seven and above. So, uh, it's almost like a trade-off, right? Yeah. And I think there are some people who would prefer their kids be on yellow buses, especially when they're younger, like in the sixth, seventh grade. Um, parents might prefer kids be on a yellow school bus instead of on an MBTA bus. Um, Revere is a relatively small city. I am a product of the Boston Public Schools. And when I was going to school, like 15 years ago, I was in the eighth grade. It was a challenge. Uh, because we didn't have transportation then either. Actually, it was a lot longer than that. I'm talking about the 1980s, but um, it was a challenge. But for me to get to my school, I had to walk several blocks to the bus stop, get on the bus, take that to Fields Corner Station, take the red line into the Park Street Station, get on the green line, go to Kenmore and then get off and walk about a half mile to school. So there's like, depending on where you live and what your community is like, transportation to and from school can be really complicated. And even as arduous as what I just described sounds, that's nothing compared to kids who live in rural communities and might be on a bus for two hours each way to and from school. So you're right to bring up a really complicated issue that I think is impacting kids across the Commonwealth and across the country, two different levels and different degrees. Um, I'm not opposed to thinking about some of these ideas that you presented. Um, there might be some money implications. I, I think that the, um, school committee would be open to uh, my office taking maybe a deeper dive and working with you and, and some of the students on the Student Senate to really look at what it might mean to, um, work with the MBTA to get some M7 passes and who would they be for? And what does that mean in terms of our yellow bus transportation? And, um, you know, is this something that we think about doing now? We're under contract with our bus contractor who provides those yellow buses? Is it something that we pilot? Like, if the committee is amenable to that, I'd love for us to all dig in a little bit deeper on this.
Ms. Ty?
I live in Beauchamp and this is constantly a problem from Beauchamp. For the kids who I noticed, somebody complained that I get on the bus in one place, but a kid who lives two houses down from me, even though there's an empty seat on that bus, can't get on it. And I recognize that if you do it for one, you have to do it for all. But tha- that seems to me to be such a na- a problem for the neighborhood, uh, for a neighborly sense. It, it just doesn't seem fair. But I also know that we had the finance department from the city come and with us and we said, you know, we really need buses. And I gave that example and I had other examples about, I'm scared to death that kids passing, trying to get through the highway. Um, you know, it's, there are no sidewalks in some places. And I've talked to Dr. Galucci who maps out the routes. But they, we were told, even though we went through this, that what we needed was to have a, a review of that, that the extra buses, that the city absolutely did not have money for that. And of course, we don't have the money for it because it's the city's responsibility. So, um, you know, I think that we need to revisit these things over and over again. Uh, because sometimes, you know, and especially when you have kids who will do something and show, look, there are other ways to handle these problems, that that is a real incentive for us to go back. And I for one will be very happy to do that because I'm trying to explain to my neighbors, you know, why their kids or grandkids can't get on a bus when the bus goes right by there. Why can't they get on it? And it do- it doesn't seem to make any sense. I mean, I do understand why, but it's really hard to make that. So anything we can do and input from you and any of the others, I think will be extremely valuable.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, at, what this kind of sprouted from was a lot of frustration since the Massachusetts, you know, legislature implemented this state law a few years ago. Um, so many students just wondered why it happened. You know, of course, there's, there is the, the bus driver shortage and the things like that that we have to take into account. But it's just frustration when you have a neighbor that can take the bus and then you have to end up walking 30 minutes, can't, you know, do a club, can't do a sport because of this. And for a lot of students, as you've been saying, it's just unsafe. You know, um, Mayor, Acting Mayor Keith, you came to say hi to us and talk to us, the Student Senate, about this. And we specifically noted that there are so many students that walk around the rotary, you know, take, don't take the sidewalk. They walk, you know, right through the street. Um, there's so many sa- unsafe crossings in Revere. And, and the least, the least we can do is at least dive into this because the, the last thing I would want is students feeling unsafe, you know, going to school or, or coming from school.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kings- oh, Ms. Monoroso, then Mr. Kingston.
Uh, just, I wanted to thank the Student Senate so much for coming. Like, we all know this is a very real issue. And that roundabout you just mentioned, like, there's been so many times where I see cars that have to break because a child thought they could make it across in time. And like, some of them were, some of the students that were here from In the Heights, I've actually seen you walk past my street at eight night, at night when it's dark alone from the school. And I'm just like, how long has this child been walking? And so I think it's just, I know, I don't know about any of you, but I do not want to walk four miles a day in the snow and the rain and the heat with a backpack, instruments, sports equipment. And that's what our students are having to do. And it also puts caretakers' jobs at risk, right? Because now they have, some of them may have to be late to work to drop off their child because they're prioritizing their safety as they should. Or they have to leave work early in a moment where they can't leave their job. And so I think, um, like Dr. Kelly was saying, the challenges before were also very real. You know, there is, we have students in rural areas that also don't have transportation. So I think being in a city that has the tools gives us the opportunity to actually address this because I know this is everywhere. So if we have the opportunity and the power to make a change and further digest in it, I think we should. So I just want to thank the students again for putting this presentation together and a comparative analysis of the recommendations and possible options. And I support Dr. Kelly. I think it's essential that we continue this conversation to hopefully bring about an actual solution to the safety that our students are facing every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kingston?
I'm gonna echo the same comments, but basically I would ask Dr. Kelly to have a further conversation with you folks and hopefully we can come up with some kind of compromise, um, to help as many students as we can because I agree with all the points. Thank you. So I'll put this back to Dr. Kelly to sit and talk with you folks and possibly come up with a solution and come back to us. Because at, at the end of the, at the end of the road, there's gonna be some kind of funding involved. Thank you.
Uh, Eerta, thank you for coming here tonight. Thank you, Ryan, for coming up, uh, representing this, the school. When we met, uh, just a little over a month ago, you know, I, first thing I went back when speaking about the bus and the, the mileage, uh, it didn't seem equitable. But then, uh, the good news is that this was actually something that was proposed to do in elementary, or sorry, elementary slash middle schools. And, uh, because of the, because of the age, uh, they actually decided, the school committee made a good choice and decided to pull back on that. And it did come down to funding. Ultimately, the spend, um, the spend rate has been so, so much higher than the rest of the budget spend rate because of the lack of drivers, because of the transportation cost increases. They had to make some tough decisions and unfortunately, the high school students have paid the price. Um, I would, I would definitely be in favor of taking a look at all these unique situations when it comes down to like one tenth of a mile, uh, doing bus audits. I see the buses in the morning and I see the buses at night, uh, and sometimes they're not full. So if a bus is going two, two miles to Beauchamp or 1.9 miles to Beauchamp or to North Revere, if they can go 2.1 to pick up two more students when the bus, bus isn't full, it makes total sense. So being able to audit these tr- this transportation to make sure that we're maximizing it because they should have a full bus. So if they're going to one segment of the city, uh, rather than having 30 students when you can have 40, go the extra tenth of a mile. Uh, but we need to hear from those students as well. So, you know, being able to champion and making sure that we have specifics uh, to the students that live just on that cusp. Uh, and maybe, maybe there's a needs-based, uh, uh, response that we can take a look and, uh, and, and go, go that route. And then of course, with the, uh, the M passes and the S passes, you know, this is something that when I went to high school, we didn't have yellow bus transportation at high school, but we were able to get on the MBTA, uh, and get to high school, um, for free. Uh, that's, and, yeah. Everett, yeah, we got on the one, was it the 110 bus? Right? And we just got up, went to the top of the street. We got on the bus, no card, nothing. I don't even know what the program was called back then. We just got on a bus. Uh, it was. It was, and it took us, dropped us off in front of the school. But they, they knew it was for students and that was just how it worked. That was pretty cool. So I would imagine that working with the MBTA and finding a way so that we can provide these passes, but of course, we do have to monitor to make sure they're not abused because unfortunately, whenever we do provide certain programming, sometimes some people look at it as a lens to make sure they're being taken care of and taking care of the students. And then sometimes people look at how they can use these for their own advantage. But we want to make sure we're providing safe transportation. And then the last piece, you mentioned the safe routes to school. As soon as you, you talked to me about the, the crossings, especially over by Bell Circle, I did reach out to Julie DiMauro, and Julie has reached out to the DOT, who controls those crossings, to take a deeper look at the crossing times between 7:30 and 8:15, and then, I believe, 1:45 or, and 2, 2:20, the exit times from those schools. I'm not saying that they're going to change things because I know the DOT, and sometimes takes years to get responses, but I do, they, they have responded with a big thumbs up that they heard us. And hopefully they'll be able to do something about that. But thank you very much for doing this. Great presentation.
Thank you for the time.
Ms. Ellis?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you as well for that, for that presentation. I thought it was really well put together and I appreciate the time you put into, to, presenting to us tonight. I would say that I know that I, I have had conversations with some of our representatives, and that might be a route we want to take to put some pressure there. And so they, they are working on that, on that angle as well. I don't know how, how much, but I'm sure that, you know, everyone knows that that bell circle is, it's, I cringe when I'm driving through that circle and there are kids crossing over. And I just, I mean, we have to do something about it. There's absolutely no doubt about it. So I think maybe if we can get a little campaign going to put some pressure on our reps, maybe, maybe that will help to, to expedite things. But I would say, I think we, we spend about $10 million of our budget on transportation. It's, it's a lot of money right now going to transportation. And I'd say that we provide more than the law requires us to, as is. But I think that maybe some logical room in what you presented here and some discretion and maybe, I agree that it's worth for us to put this under a microscope and kind of examine it and see maybe we're not executing as best as we possibly could. So, thank you. Thank you for highlighting this. It is an issue that we're all concerned about, but I think you've brought a, a fresh perspective on it, and I appreciate that.
Can I add two more points to this? All right. So one is, I just want to be clear that the vast majority of our budgeting for transportation is for special needs students who are outplaced and have special transportation requirements to get them to and from school. We don't spend a ton of money on our in-district regular ed transportation budget. And Matt Cruz went over the details of that when we had our most recent budget meeting. So I just want to highlight that, because $10 million is a huge number, right? But it's not as if we have $10 million to play with. Probably eight and a half to nine of that is money that we can't really touch. But I do, the other thing that I think that we need to look at, and the mayor made me think of this when he mentioned full buses coming to school and half buses going home, half full buses going home, is we really need our families to partner with us accurately on this situation because we rely on families to let us know honestly if they need transportation or not. We invite everybody who fits the proper criteria, depending on the grade level. We send them a letter saying, you qualify for transportation, please let us know if you're going to take advantage of it. And I do know that we learned over the last couple of years that some people automatically say yes to that so that if they need it, they have it. But they're not really planning to rely on that transportation every day. And that inhibits our ability to do things like expand and see if the student who lives 1.9 miles or 1.8 miles instead of two can fit on that bus. Because we can only go by what the families tell us. So we schedule the buses so that they are absolutely full based on the number of kids that qualify for transportation. But, you know, if we could figure out a way to maybe let parents have that occasional bus ride and not take that seat up every day if they don't really need it every day, that's something that we can work on too. And maybe you all have some strategies for us on that.
If I may, just like to say that Erda has been a great writer all the way through school. As a matter of fact, I think I gave her an award several times. And I think today she found out that she's getting another special award. Well, did you find out today? Okay. Then I'll let you dream about that tonight.
Ms. Ty, loose lips sink ships.
Superintendent Public Speak. Set him up for the agenda. Any public speak?
There's nobody on the Zoom looking to speak. Nobody with their hand up, I should say.
Close that side. And then Superintendent Report, Ms. Kelly, I know that you have something special you wanted, you wanted to welcome a new member?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a really quick second to welcome Jackie to the School Committee meeting. Everybody knows that school districts cannot function without a strong relationship between their school committee and the central office and all of the staff. And we're all one team, working together to focus on what kids need and what we can do to improve our school systems in our schools to make sure every student has what they need regardless of what that is. And I know that Jackie wanted to introduce herself a little bit to share with those who are here from the school community, but also the community at large, about the role and her vision as a new member of the school committee. So, welcome. We look forward to working with you and...
Thank you so much, Dr. Kelly. I think I've had a lot of smiles between yesterday, my swearing in, and today, so I definitely can't feel my cheeks by now. It's only been 24 hours since I was sworn in, and this is my third school committee meeting of the day. I had one, a one-on-one earlier, so I, I really got to work and I took my call to serve. And I'm so excited to learn from all of you and just work to support students. And I think serving students, in order to serve them fully, it also means supporting our staff and the adults in the classrooms and supporting our families because you're the ones that are with our students every day. And so I look forward to supporting all of you. And then I think just as I continue to work with everything, you know, I am also a state employee for the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And with that, knowing my full responsibilities, it also means I follow Conflict of Interest law. So there will be times where if something is under the direct purview of DESI or things I oversee at the department, I will publicly make a known that I must step away just to, you know, follow the law and make sure I can serve everyone in both capacities. And there'll actually be a moment later today where I will do that. So I just wanted to inform my fellow members. And also within that, I, I cannot participate in things from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM unless, of course, I'm taking a break or I am on my lunch, which is my own time. So I just wanted to let you all know that in case you ever reach out, give me a call, and I just can't pick up the phone in that moment. But thank you all so much.
And that's great for constituents to know too. Okay. Aside from the presentation we already had from the Finance Department, we have three other items under the Superintendent's Report. I'm going to remind our speakers that we are having 10-minute presentations. I think that might have been lost on some earlier. But with that said, I'm going to invite up Diana Finn, who's going to share with us the current goings-on of the Guidance Department, as she does every year at this time. She's going to tell us a little bit about our high school students, what they're up to, where they're headed, and what their next steps are. So...
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. I'll be focusing tonight on three main areas within the Guidance Department. One is our newly appointed early college designation from the Department of Education. The second are the changes in our program of studies, some that Ms. Williams spoke about earlier today, as well as in addition to the Guidance Department, which we're excited about. And then lastly, some celebrations of college acceptances and scholarships within the class of 2023. So, early college within Massachusetts is relatively new. Prior to 2019, when the first cohort of early college was designated by DESI, we enrolled students in what the state called dual enrollment, which were singleton courses that students took on campus during fall, spring, and summer semesters. The funding came from the state, went directly to the colleges, and colleges funded certain courses. And then in 2018 and 19, the department shifted how they funded dual enrollment. And the name change happened in 2019 when nine Massachusetts high schools were designated as having early college designation. We are proud of this March to find out that we are part of this designation, starting in the fall with our freshman class. And so entering next year, there'll be over 48 partnering high schools in Massachusetts. Each designation has a high school partnership coupled with a higher ed partner. And so our partnership here is Revere High School with North Shore Community College. And so within our proposal, there are five design principles that we needed to meet, one being equitable access, academic pathways, enhanced student support, there needs to be a connection to career, and then high-quality partnerships between the high school and the college. And so within our pathway designation, students need to engage in at least 30 credits within the school day with enhanced support and connection to career. You can move on to the next slide, Dr. Kelly. And so these are some numbers. Sorry, they're slightly small there. Just from 2018, 19 through 22, 23, I included our internships because I thought that number was interesting as well. But you can see our dual enrollment numbers from 2018, 19 through this current year, which doesn't include our summer numbers as well. So we've enrolled 215 students. Is that what that says? Sorry, I can't see. 215 students in dual enrollment class, semester classes. And in addition, we have students taking classes full-time at North Shore as part of the Gateway to College program over there, which is a full-time program.
And I just want to highlight, before we move on, the cost savings that families experience as a result of this. The credits that they get from early college, which is typically 12 credits, or from dual enrollment, those are all free to the student, and they're college credits that go on with them after they graduate Revere High School. So this right here in dual enrollment for each semester this year alone, 215 students benefited from a free college course. So just to highlight that.
Right. Within our early college program, we'll estimate if a student completes the 30 credits that we have targeted, it'll be just under $7,000 in savings for them.
Thanks.
And so the partnership with North Shore Community College, we have committed to five years of working with them. Our enrollment's starting next year, so our current freshman class will be 75 students matriculating into the program as sophomores next year. They will begin their first classes in second semester of their sophomore year. They'll take two classes each semester from second semester, sophomore year, through their senior year of high school. I'll get into more detail about the coursework a few slides from now. Recruitment is just starting to ramp up now, not just yet, Diane.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
And so coursework, 30 credits from 10 to 12. There will be a connection to careers, depending on the career pathway that students choose with internships throughout the community. Some of the supports I'd like to highlight, we do, we're excited to have an early college teacher. And so while the teacher of record is the North Shore Community College professor, there, we are happy that, to have the support of a teacher within Revere High School, to be a liaison between the college and the high school, to sit in on various classes and to make sure that students have the support when they need them and when they need it. We have the plans for an early college advisory so that students will loop with an early college advisor through sophomore, junior, and senior year. Once we get this underway, we will have early college mentors for students so that as they move up from freshman and sophomore year through senior year, they have additional peer support, our STEM and Writing Center. And we are continuing our partnership with one goal, to help cohorts of students that need additional support, content support within their classes. And so the next slide highlights the schedule and the guided academic pathways. And so to align with our new high schools' pathway concentrations, we chose education, entrepreneurship, environmental science, and then a catch-all of liberal arts. So any credit that students take within the early college designation process is part of the mass transfer block. So it will transfer to any of the state colleges and universities, which we're super excited about, of course. And so in ninth grade, ooh, not just yet, sorry. I went through some of this. So the first two semesters, students will take these courses that will build a foundation of prerequisites for them. So speech, higher ed, comp 101, and psych. So it builds this foundation of, they don't need, students will not need to have a prerequisite to take those courses. But those courses themselves are prerequisites to future courses in 11th and 12th grade. And so in 11th grade, students will determine which pathway they want to go down. Within our plan, students will take classes on Mondays and Wednesdays, one class Monday and Wednesday, one class Tuesday and Thursday. And then Friday, we have a whole support block from 11:00 to 2:30 for students to get any and all of the support. And if they're caught up, we can start up with internships earlier than 11th grade as well. The first two semesters also, we are having classes on Revere High School's campus, so the professor will come here. And then after that, we will, courses will take place at the North Shore Campus in Lynn. And so just to shift, in addition to the college coursework, we are extremely proud of some new electives that students participated in some surveying in and we're able to run next year. Just to highlight, we have three additional AP courses next year, AP Art, AP Music Theory, and AP Precalculus. Last week was the final week of AP testing, and we were proud that we had over 150 additional tests last year, so we were over 650 tests. And so with these additional AP electives, we'll only see that number grow. We're happy that they're in very, in areas like art and music that we haven't had any classes in before. And just a couple of others that I'd like to highlight, one is exploratory plumbing, which will have an internship component. Developing future health professionals, which will have an internship component as well. And then Intro to Translation and Interpretation, thanks to Dr. Garcia. We have a collaboration with UMass Amherst. While it's not credit-bearing at this time, fingers crossed, once they see how fabulous our students are, we'll get on that train as well. And as Ms. Williams said earlier, dance and fashion design, we're a resounding vote by the students, and we're running plenty of sections of those next year.
And I just want to add that the exploratory plumbing is in collaboration with the Voke.
Okay. And so we are so happy, our career development coordinator is the last straw of our ELO, External Learning Opportunities, team at Revere High School. She is starting up after Memorial Day. And so Tiffany Curry will be our early college liaison coordinator, all things dual enrollment. Megan Walsh is our internship coordinator. And then we have Tara Mitchell starting up in May for career development programming. And so we're excited for there to be Tier One, Two, and Three career development opportunities at Revere High School. So including career development seminars and workplace, a workplace component, as well as continuing a development of our trade partnerships, career fairs, and connecting to the community to develop more career partnerships. Okay. And then our last two slides here are our celebrations. These are my favorite of the few here. So we know the class of 2023 started here, at Revere High School, as freshmen in 1920. So they have seen it all. And so we are, I, I feel like this list of college acceptances, it is just a snapshot of them. I feel like it's a testament to their resiliency and all that is good with teenagers and how they are, they have really taken challenges that no one could have ever anticipated and made the best of it. And so our last slide just has some highlights of scholarships. At this point in the year, we start compiling the merit-based scholarships that students have received, and we're proud that 118 seniors have earned the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, which is based on MCAS scores. which is based on MCAS scores, the Gates Scholarship, which is the first that we have ever had at Revere High School, which covers everything, everything? A full ride, yep. Aposty Scholar, going to Center College, and then the others that are there, including Chancellor Scholarships to all of our state schools, other than MC, other than North Adams State out in Western Mass. But I'm super proud of all of our Class of 2023 students. We're excited, within a few weeks, we have our City of Revere, sorry, Revere High School Community Scholarship presentations on May 31 at 3:30 PM. So we're excited to continue celebrating our Class of 2023.
Thank you, Diana. Quick question. Of the graduating class, do we have numbers? How many of them are college or trade school or doing something wonderful following high school?
So we are still compiling all of that information. Now I can certainly give it to Dr. Kelly once we have it.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Moneroso.
College and career readiness is my jam. That's what I do with all of my mentees. I was just so excited. I think dual enrollment is so important. I actually graduated from my community college a week before I graduated from high school because I was able to receive my associate's degree for free. So I understand the importance of this. I thought I wasn't going to go to college, so at least I could get my AA. Like, this opportunity is just amazing. I'm also an alum of the Gates Millennium Scholarship, with covered full rides, study abroad. So in my capacity as school committee member, if there's any questions on what the Gates program offers for students and the onboarding, I can answer those as an alum myself. And so I just had a few questions, I will have a lot of them, but I'll just ask too, and I'll pass it on, and then I'll go back to mine. So my first question is, what does advertisement of this dual enrollment and career opportunity look like for students and families? It's kind of like, I heard tiered support, so it's kind of like, how are students selected or informed of the opportunity? And then my second was, is transportation provided to students who have to go to the college campus?
So the easy question to transportation is yes. We did put that off for a few semesters, so that we're able to get those ducks in a row, knowing how many students need to get to get to North Shore. And to answer your first question, we have started to roll out presentations in all year-long classes to freshmen. In addition, we are having parent meetings in multiple languages that are after-school hours. We'll also have those in multiple languages that are asynchronously recorded, so that parents can watch those at their convenience. And so the cycle will be ongoing. And so there'll always be on-ramps and off-ramps for students who either transferred in late, weren't ready to engage in their first semester of sophomore year. And so while there will be a deadline, and we'll need to make sure that we want to fill all of our seats, we know that that number will be flexible, and there'll always be recruitment that's going on in all various ways, whether it's individual with parents who have questions, or whether it's full-scale for the freshmen who are going to be the next cohort in 10th grade.
Mr. Kingston.
Ms. Finn, I want to thank you for all your hard work and your staff. The other thing I'd like to mention is, I had a short discussion with you, and I was told that we have two students that are going to MIT. For the folks out there who don't particularly like the high school, or have things, have, in my opinion, bad things to say about it, as a graduate of this school and this building, I am still very proud of it. And I really want to, I will beg, plead, and ask the superintendent to publish that list of colleges widely, everywhere we can put it. Because I want people to know that, yeah, do we have some problems up here? Do we have some struggles? Do we have some challenges? Absolutely. I'm not trying to hide anything, but we're also sending a lot of kids to a lot of great schools. And to have two kids from this class go to MIT, to me, I mean, that's astounding. So that's a credit to the kids, it's a credit to the teachers and the support staff and all the help they've gotten. But I really think, I think if there's something the school department could do a better job at, is getting the positive message out. And what's more positive than all those colleges that you just listed on that piece of paper? And again, I want to hear everyone say, we got two kids going to MIT. And no offense to the other kids, my daughter went to Assumption, my son went to UMass Dartmouth, and I'm proud of them as well. I don't care where someone goes to school, if they go in the workforce, or they go in the service, that's fine. But I hate when someone knocks the building. And, you know, it's easy to knock, but how did, how did those kids get into MIT? It didn't happen by accident. And I think that just needs to get out, and I think every member of this committee should be telling people that, just to get some more positive vibe from the high school. Sorry for the long-winded, but it's something that really bothers me. Thank you.
Can I just respond to that quickly?
Thank you, Ms. Tai.
Sorry. So I have to say that the Revere Journal does a great job. Every year, they do a graduation spread, and they do multiple pages where they feature the graduation ceremony, kids graduating, they print all of the schools the kids are going to, they celebrate the valedictorian and salutatorian. So that is a great way for people in the community to understand where the kids are going to school and what they're doing. I do think that, to your point, which I think is a very good one, Mr. Kingston, there are some people who don't want to hear the good news. There are some people who like to relish in the negativity. And I don't know that we're ever going to change who those folks are, but we can, as you said, do the best we can to make sure the word gets out there for the good things that we're doing, but people have to choose themselves to pay attention to that.
Thank you. Ms. Tai?
Well, speaking of the MIT, so I was very impressed when I saw that someone had been accepted to Wellesley, as you know, because we have a Revere High graduate at Wellesley, and there is an honor, who graduated from Wellesley, she's not still there. And there is an honor wall across Wellesley, and the first picture is Madeleine Albright. Now, maybe some of the younger people don't know, but one of the most accomplished women in government in the United States. And the second picture is that of this Revere High School graduate. So I thought I could, I want to connect her with, Kristi, it's Kristi. I wanted to connect her with a Wellesley graduate, and then they said, oh, no, she's decided to go to MIT. And I thought, what a happy problem. Wow, isn't that so, isn't that wonderful? And we have stories like that all along, but sometimes people don't listen to those stories. Or maybe people are too shy about telling the stories as well. But that was certainly wonderful. Kristi has been a star all the way through in her, in school. The whole family actually has, yeah. Thank you for the information.
Thank you. Mr. Frante?
Diane, just one question. We used to get the applications in April for the, you know, for the scholarships, and it seems to be coming later and later and later. Is there a reason why that we're having this problem?
What's, I'm not sure what.
Well, the thing is, we used to get the applicants that apply for scholarships to get a make vacation. Now we're getting it like the second and third week in May. Is there a reason why we're, right there, problem?
So the reason is because students have until May 1 to give their decisions to colleges. And in the past, perhaps students were able to say they would be attending a school without seeing the financial aid package. And so we know that how that financial aid package comes back to students dictates what school they can attend in a lot of cases. And so we can certainly get scholarship applications out earlier. The name of the school that a student is attending, however, could change based on what their financial aid is. So I can, I always feel like giving the scholarship sponsors the most accurate information, even if it's a couple of weeks later. It is tighter on the guidance departments and to get the scholarship awards together because it's also pushed two weeks later on our end. But I just feel like the sponsors would want the most accurate information.
Well, we're still getting applicants that have four schools, they don't know which one, or they're undecided what to do. You know, and that makes it a tough decision to who you want to give the scholarship to. So I think we sort of got to clean that up if we can somehow, make it a little bit easier for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moneroso.
I just wanted another student highlight. So Tiffany Petrie, maybe you all know, she didn't win the Coca-Cola Scholarship, but she was the only finalist in the entire state from a Title I public school. That scholarship has over hundreds of thousands of students who apply, and only a thousand or so in the entire country has chosen as finalists. And she was the only student of color from a Title I public school to be selected, so that was also really great.
Thank you. Great work, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Finn. Up next, we have Dr. Mona Ford Walker, who completed her doctoral dissertation in defense just a couple of weeks ago. And she's going to be presenting on the work that she did over the last year with her team, who she will introduce, on evaluating, studying, and making recommendations for our BBST process. And I'm going to emphasize the time.
Hi, everybody, good evening. Come on up, team. Come on up. Come on up, come closer. So as Dr. Kelly said, my name is Mona Ford Walker, and I led the process over the course of the year with a dynamic group of 21 educators within the Revere Public Schools. And that process really included taking a look at the BBST system and structure that exists within the district, and looking at what is strong and what's really working well, and identifying areas that need some work. And so just to make sure that we all have the same understanding, the building-based support team is a school-based team, and essentially, the team functions as a body that meets every six to eight weeks to create, monitor, and plan for students that have been identified by an educator in the building as having some sort of academic concern. And so this group functions every sixty, well, it functions throughout the year, but it meets every six to eight weeks in order to monitor, assess, and plan. And so, again, as I said, my work really centered around working together with RPS educators over the year to look at that system and structure. And so this small group that's here is representative of the 21 stakeholders who participated in this working group throughout the year, and I'm happy that they're here this evening. So I'll pass it on to them.
You can go to the next one. The next one's.
So here's us. Oh, well, I'm Donna Page, I work at Rumney Marsh, I'm a small learning group math teacher. Yeah, next one. So once that comes in clear. So this is our timeline. I frankly wasn't quite sure what I was getting into when I signed up for the directors' meetings. We had five in-house meetings and five meetings that were on our own time outside of the school day. Thank you. It really laid out for us, and I know it hit home for me, that this was some serious business that we were doing. We had an issue, and we needed to correct it. And when Mona laid this out, you can see in October, we were launching, we were really just getting to know each other so that we could have a safe environment to share ideas. Let's see, we, typical stuff, establishing norms. In December, in January, in December, we really started reaching out to other schools. We interviewed other schools, that's going to be on a slide coming up. We started doing some fieldwork, developing recommendations. And in February and March, just repeatedly working with feedback loops to increase what we're doing. And now we're here in April and May, finalizing the work, getting ready to meet again in June, I believe, to continue our work and get ready to present it to the schools. So our objectives, identify what was working in Revere, and definitely what was not working as far as the BBST, to review and consider research from papers and also national models. We did a lot of outreach, and to develop some research-based recommendations. Next slide. So I say, so we did meet 10 times throughout the year, and of interest, we did, we reached out to seven different models, one of them being Revere Public Schools. Because in the group of 21 educators, we realized some of us really didn't know how the BBST teams worked, and it was actually different in most of the schools. So that was a big issue that really reached out. But we had, we reached out to Everett, Medford, Lawrence, Chelsea, Twin Rivers, and also Oyster Bay. And I believe there was actually some discussion with Michigan, and I think somebody out in California, but we just didn't have a lot of backup information. And then, again, the feedback loops became very important.
I'm Melissa Lomas, I'm the principal over at the Hill School. I'm going to briefly share with you our findings. So after we talked a lot about the BBST process in Revere, which really is essentially a multi-tiered system of support, which every school in Massachusetts is required to have, we discovered that there was some disconnection between the purpose of the process, the purpose of the group itself. And I'm just going to have you fly through these slides, Dr. Kelly, because you all can read. But what we really discovered was that there was a lot on the plate that we needed to really sift through, and that what we were doing across all 11 schools was all slightly different. And figured that our recommendations would then be to kind of not blow up what we have, but restructure it in a way with some support from digitization, to make this more streamlined and a more effective process for all of our students and teachers. So pass it off to Lindsay.
Hi, I'm Casey, I'm an occupational therapist in the district, and I, you can jump, yeah. So with the research that we did and that we've talked about, we drafted eight areas of recommendations of how to restructure and move forward with our BBST. So when we look at school structure, we created this idea of having one BBST lead run the meeting alongside a building administrator and alongside the special education coordinator, which is our newly redesigned ETL position. This way, the meetings are being held accountable by three people. And then, of course, the referring teacher that has the concerns, who has brought the concerns to our BBST team, and then, as needed, the other educators that are involved. For example, as a related service provider, I would find it extremely important to attend this meeting if the referring teacher has concerns surrounding their OT skills, but it would not be important for me to be there for every student if those students don't have the concern. This will allow participation by this entire team to be, to fit the unique needs of the So we broke down kind of what the role of the administrator and the special education coordinator would be, considering these would be new to the BBST team, as before it was really kind of running on its own by the BBST chairs in the buildings. And I pulled some important points from this of the role of the administrator to support scheduling. We found some of these districts that we interviewed used the admin to help with finding coverage for the teachers that need to attend BBST, because currently in Revere, or at least in Garfield, as where I am primarily, we found that the buildings were doing things so differently, and Garfield's meetings were either before or after school. So out of our contract time, which really made it hard to attract those teachers to come and participate to their, to the fullest need of the student. And then the other really important point under the role of the special education coordinator is to ensure that the children are being educated in the least restrictive setting, and to stop the pathway to special education that this BBST seemed to have turned into.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Cordes, I'm the assistant principal at the Lincoln School. One thing that we looked at was the expectations and what that means for each of the chairs of the BBST. So one of the expectations that the team is recommending is that there's professional learning involved with being the chair. So that could be a PGT for each BBST chair to participate with, so that the Paul Revere chair is meeting with, the Lincoln chair is meeting with the Garfield chair, so that we have consistency across the district. There's also going to be professional learning for the staff that is working with BBST, the referring teachers, that everyone needs to know what's going on in the BBST process so that we can all use it to the best of its ability. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. There's going to be some expectations on the BBST chair to include the caregiver and the students when appropriate more often. Through our research, we found that the caregivers were not knowing that this process was happening, and then they were getting a letter in the mail that said, "Our BBST has referred your student to special education, and that is not something that we are looking for. We want the parents to be a part of the process from the very beginning." So part of the new responsibilities and expectations for the BBST chair is to outreach to the families. Similar to the special ed process, we're going to have three attempts. So one before the process begins, and two during, and then a follow-up at the end. We're also asking to raise the compensation. We're putting more asks on these BBST chairs. Already, the compensation was unattractive. It was 1,200, and we are looking to raise that to 2,000. This is going to help compensate the time outside of the classroom.
Can I clarify one point on here? The last bullet, compensate other team members, should say, for work outside of...yes, okay.
Yes, yeah. The other team members who are the ones that we highlighted.
Yeah, so similar to what Casey mentioned, so sometimes the meetings are taking place before school or after school. And so we're proposing that if there's a team member that needs to attend the meeting, that they are getting compensated for either of those times that they're attending the meeting, and that's outside of the regular working school day. And so we found that that was really something that most of the people who are participating in the process agreed was a barrier to really fully participating in it.
For our accountability, now that we've decided that we need a system that's cohesive across the district, we need to ensure, you know, these levels of accountability to make sure it stays this way, because I'm sure at one point, BBST was cohesive, and things changed over time, and we hadn't really looked into it until we did this this year. So now we want to institute, you know, these levels at the district where the new teachers, the current teachers, and the facilitators are all getting a yearly training as part of the PD that we do at the beginning of the year, and the opportunity during new teacher orientation for new teachers to learn what this process is about. And then at the building, to ensure that there is that safe community of practice that these teachers feel like they can come, and that they can be listened to and heard. And then at the classroom level, or the more the teacher level, to make sure that these goals are actually being implemented, and then focus these referrals for specific interventions so that our teachers that are referring consider all of the skills, not just one area that the student seems to have weaknesses in.
So to hold ourselves accountable, we looked at some digitization recommendations. Thank you to Jamie Flynn. She organized us meeting with several companies to kind of figure out which was the best fit for us. And there's, for all of these reasons, we wanted to digitize the process, but we decided that the best way to do that was through expanding our Power School license to include their MTSS data collection. We wanted to thank the school committee for their support of that. We are going to be moving forward with that. Thank you.
So just what Lindsay is referring to is a piece that was in the suggested budget purchases after the first Ways and Means Subcommittee.
So the next area that we have drafted recommendations fall under our D cap, which is our dist...oh, I don't, I should have wrote this down.
District Curriculum and Accommodations Plan?
That one. So right now, the district has one, and it's, it's an older document that is kind of piecemeal together from different areas that at one point, teachers and educators in the district collaborated to write strategies that teachers can try before now referring to special education. And we found that the document wasn't the best. It's not super user-friendly, and there's no specific procedures listed for these suggestions or resources for the teachers to then look into in how to apply these strategies. So we would recommend to continue this working group that we were a part of and that Mona started into next year, and into a way to review, revise, and reformat our D cap with as many different educators as possible, to continue to update the D cap. We would also then want to break the document up into grade-level bands, such as kindergarten to second grade, third to fifth grade, and so on, because right now, it's just one document. And intervening for a student in reading in second grade is entirely different than intervening for a middle schooler. Because right now, our document only looks at students performing below grade level, and we want it to have the opportunity to then be able to support students performing above grade level, and create, you know, a live document that can constantly be changed as research has changed and updated, and it is going to be tied right into the digital format that Lindsay just mentioned, so that teachers can record what strategies they've tried and how the student reacted to them or responded to them. And then if a student moved schools, let's say from Garfield to Paul Revere, then that follows their online account, and so then their new teachers can see what's already been tried.
And finally, our scheduling recommendations. This is a little bit repetitive of what we've already said, but we want to hope to schedule the meetings during the school day so that there aren't childcare issues that we're coming up into or other things that people have outside of school. Utilize Zoom whenever it's possible, and then, like we said, under the compensation, if the meeting does have to be outside of school time, that we would provide compensation for that.
So our next steps include tonight, presenting to school committee, updating you on our work over the course of the year. And we're going to actually start to roll out the work to all of the schools on June 8th. We're asking every school to send a school-based team here in order to get a quick glimpse of the new online system that will be central to the work next year, but also get a sense of what the new expectations are for the BBST process and why. And really start to tackle some of the work now for next year, so that when September comes, we're ready and up and running, and being most efficient with our time. And then finally, initial planning for the start of the BBST Working Group 2.0, that's what we're calling it. That's next year's group. And that's it. Any questions? Everybody, you can come on up. Any questions?
How many students do you, do you expect that you would be able to service?
That's a wonderful question. And right now, that number is different, school to school. So for example, at Melissa's school, they have the Hill. It was a very heavy caseload in terms of the number of students that went through the BBST process. And at the middle point of the year, there were 50 students that one BBST lead was kind of juggling the caseload for, whereas a city such as CityLab had four students as of a month ago. So it really varies. And with the new structure and the reorganization of the special ed department, part of this work will really sit with the special education coordinators to provide more of a, I would say, more of support to the school-based teams with interventions that are tried and attempted, but also with making sure that we are doing the best that we possibly can with providing the least restrictive environment for all students. And this structure, the BBST and the D cap, both are really intended to do just that. So hopefully, the numbers might seem high at any given moment, but with the right supports in place, hopefully we'll see on the other end, the number of students referred to special education decreased.
I guess I'm just thinking about the new campus supervisor positions and some of the other new positions that, where there will be caseloads, and I imagine that there must be, there will probably be some overlapping of, you know, of those different branches working with particular students. So I think it's a wonderful thing that we have this opportunity, that the students have this opportunity to be getting hit from all these different directions. And so, you know, I look forward to seeing this work kind of play out and the collaboration, you know? Thank you.
And I'll say too, part of the work, I don't want to add more to the BBST Working Group 2.0, but part of the work next year will be to monitor some of these changes and to really assess whether, exactly, if it's working, and how do we need to readjust and reshift moving forward.
Wonderful. And I'll just add one more piece. I think that what we've been missing from our BBST process previously is the support piece in the classroom that Mona just mentioned. So we would have the BBST coordinator who would convene a meeting if a teacher referred a student, and typically, the referral was, there might be something wrong here, there might be a learning need here that hasn't been diagnosed. And so they would come, and they would talk, and typically, what comes out of that meeting is that the BBST coordinator would say, "You should try A, B, and C, and see how that goes." And the teacher would go back to the classroom and theoretically try A, B, and C with the student, but still doing all of their other day-to-day, regular job responsibilities. And maybe didn't know what B was, or how C was supposed to be implemented, right? Six weeks would go by, they'd go back to the BBST, everything's still the same. All right, let's, let's get the testing done and see if the child needs some special education services, and move in that direction. And so now what we have with the redesign of the special ed team, by having the building-based special ed coordinators, that person is at the BBST meeting, the way that the team just described. They're there together with an administrator, they're all equally responsible. The teacher makes a referral, and recommendations are to try A, B, and C. And now, the special ed coordinator is going to go to that teacher's classroom and say, "Let me show you what C looks like. Let's try B with this student and see what happens." Now they come together six weeks later, and things have actually been tried and documented to see what's working, what helping, and we think that overall, that process will reduce the referrals for special education overall, and that, that ensures that kids are learning in the least restrictive environment.
The new intervention positions that, thank you to all of you for approving those as well, expand capacity for serving Tier 2 and Tier 3 students in an intervention model. When there's only classroom teachers and, you know, maybe a reading interventionist or two at a school, how are we assessing or addressing the challenges in mathematics? How are we taking a look at those kids who are soaring, and how can we intervene with them, and like, from the opposite end of the spectrum? So we are so appreciative of you all helping us to flesh out those intervention teams, because now our MTSS is unstoppable. We've got the, the resources, we've got the human capital, and we've got the structures and the systems in place to keep it accountable.
Thank you. Mr. Kingston?
I don't even know if I want to say this. I appreciate the time you've put in. I do think you should get paid for time after school. My only concern is if we start to pay some people, then what about the other people that are on different committees after school that are doing things? I'm going to bring up the handbook committee. It's been a lot...now, I've missed some meetings because I work, so I get there when I can and when I'm allowed to leave work to do that, but it's been a lot more time than I ever thought. And I've sat, we've been there till 4:30, and there's people in this room that can attest to that. And so some, you know, people are putting in two hours after their day, you know, the teachers that are involved. And someone said to me, gee, we should, this should have been stipended, and I said, "Yeah, I agree, but we should have did that at the beginning of the process." So I think maybe, and again, budget's always a problem, but I think while there's money, money was put in the budget for this project, I think, and it has really nothing to do with you, it's just a general observation, it's something that we need to look at for a lot of things, because maybe we would have a little more participation if there was a little, and I'm saying little, because we just don't, you know, you run out of money at the end of the day, and I have no problem with what you're doing, and it sounds like, in my humble opinion, that we might have saving money, because if we're able to, you know, not provide, not provide some services that may not be needed, or cut some services that, you know, gee, you really don't need this. And because the special needs programs are, you know, unfortunately, they're expensive. While needed, while intentioned, I get it, but I'm just a little concerned about someone coming to me and saying, "Well, gee, you want me to do this after school, but you're not going to pay me, but you're paying them." And I don't mean them in a, in a bad way. I appreciate all your work. You're here now, not getting paid, and I appreciate that. So thank you. But I want to make that clear, because I, you know, again, the handbook committee probably should have been a stipend, because it's spent a lot of time. It has.
We struggle back and forth with this idea all the time, because I do think everybody should be valued, and their time should be valued, and people should be paid fairly for everything that they do. We are in a profession that is salaried, and there are some professional expectations that go along with that. We are bound by contracts, which is a great thing, and helps protect people from being exploited. I think there's a little bit of a difference when we're saying, "You must come to this BBST meeting and tell us what's going on with this child, and it's going to be at 3:00 PM." I think it's a little bit different than, "Hey, everybody, we think our handbooks need some work. Anybody interested in helping out with that?" I think there's a little bit of a distinguishing factor there. Often, we have people who will come and do that work because they're really interested in the equity that results from redoing a handbook, or, you know, doing that kind of thing, and they're eager and willing to do it. Sometimes people do it because they're in a CAGS program and need some hours on their internship. You know, there's a lot of different reasons why somebody might do some of the voluntary work, but I do differentiate that, I think, from when we're saying, "We need you to come and be at this meeting, because we have to know what's going on with this child," and you don't really have an option to say no, you know?
Our first recommendation is to...
Sorry. Our first recommendation would be to move it towards the school day, so that we can, we can have as many stakeholders as needed there within their contractual hours.
I do like it after school, because then you start getting into subs that sometimes we can't find. And then, with all due respect to a substitute, it's, no offense, it's not the same as having the teacher in the room. So I don't mind it being after school, it's just, I just, I'm trying to, I'm concerned about equity. And I, and I understand Dr. Kelly's words, and I totally agree, and it's in the budget. So, and we've, you know, we haven't approved the total budget, but the money's in there, so I'm happy for that. But I'm just concerned about other projects. It's something we have to look at, not so much you. Thank you.
Ms. Monoroso?
Yeah, no, I think that's a great point, you know, thinking of the equity, you know, retention is always stipends, and providing teachers adequate compensation is the key to that. I think going along with Dr. Kelly said, when it comes specifically to advocating if this is a recommendation that we discuss further, is what's required, right? We are required to provide students our tiered interventions, and special education is the law. It is a great thing and service to have, but we're also legally asked to serve students' needs, and this is something that teachers are doing outside of their hours to provide that basic education. Also, in the recommendations for digitalization, I think that's great, because sometimes, you know, students will transfer between schools, and it takes weeks to get their IEPs, and then, "I didn't know I was supposed to be giving certain interventions to this child, so now I'm breaking the law." So I think that's just going to be great, and it'll be great for us to be a model district when students transfer out of us, so that other districts don't have to be calling us, "Where's the file?", because we're, we already have it digitalized. I think one question I had is also on compensation. So the slide about PD recommendations, like if the principal isn't the one providing the PD, and it might be other staff, I don't know if it's a question to you, but are we proposing that there also be compensation for teachers that are now being offered the opportunity to take that leadership role?
We do compensate teachers whenever they take a leadership role like that. They get paid for their planning time, they don't get paid for any time that's within contractual hours. So typically, when we have teachers providing professional development to their colleagues, it's during director meeting time, which is already mandatory, but we pay them prep time to prepare for that presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly.
Mrs. Ty.
The scheduling problem has always been great, especially, you know, people, and during COVID, it was even worse, because people had sick people at home, and they couldn't leave them, or they had, they lost babysitters, they lost daycare, you know, so many things have happened. And I should think that it would be nonproductive to be demanding, of course, that people show up at this time just because they, it's part of their job, because no matter what, it's part of their life to drop their baby off at, at daycare or to do something like that. So that's really a difficult thing. I don't know whether there is any solution to this. There is. Okay, I'm glad to hear that.
I had the pleasure of observing at the Lincoln, where they have solved this problem, and they do it within their sub-budget. They just have a different cadence of meetings, and basically, the BBST team is in a stationary location. Teachers then rotate into them, so you just get one sub, because you can only meet with one teacher who's got the classroom with them at a time. You pull in an interventionist, an L teacher, a sped teacher, whoever else is servicing that kid, and we have that meeting during the school day. And then you have one sub that floats to cover the classroom teachers and the students. So... So Lincoln has solved this problem, we just need to figure out how to scale it up. Yeah.
And it's no more than 15 minutes.
Exactly. And the system that they have in place makes it so that it's protocol, it's done through a protocol. So everything is really rapid fire, everyone's got their data to present. You know, launching it might take a couple of months of growing pains so that we get into the cadence and the rhythm of being able to really clearly present our case fast and not blather on like I tend to do. But I think that with Lincoln's model, we can definitely replicate that across all 11 schools. Totally doable.
Great, great idea. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for your, well?
I'm going to take this opportunity, 60 seconds, I promise you. I just want to say thank you. I have to thank the BBST team that's here tonight. And I also have to thank the other team members that aren't here but that have put in a lot of hard work throughout the year to get to this point and to get to this process. I want to thank Jamie for your support with the data collection and help and linking us to different companies in order to figure out which company would best support Revere and the needs of the community here. And finally, I just want to thank Dr. Kelly and her team for allowing me the space to lead in this particular way over the course of the year. I've learned a tremendous amount by working alongside Dr. Kelly and her team. Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Dr. Galucci, and thank you, Dr. Macaba, for all of your support, all of your help. And I'm thanking you because this is most likely going to be my last school committee meeting where I'll be speaking in this capacity. But I am absolutely grateful for the work that I've been able to engage in and Revere over the course of the year. I've learned so much from the Revere Public Schools and from Dr. Kelly and from this wonderful group of people who've been a part of this process. So thank you so much for having me here and welcoming me here with open arms. And I look forward to all of the great work to come.
Okay. Next presentation is Dr. Garcia.
So I'll just jump in very quickly. The last presentation on, the last presentation on the superintendent's report is from our Equity Advisory Board. And I want to thank Dr. Garcia for all of his hard work and dedication. And I want to thank all of the Equity Board members who are still sitting out here before us three hours into this meeting. We really appreciate your patience. As much as we tell people 10 minutes, you can only present for 10 minutes, you can see that that never pans out. So with no further ado, I'll give it to Dr. Garcia, who will briefly introduce the rest of the crew.
No, it's a great team of educators. We have, I have had the pleasure of working with this great team that's, you know, sitting, you know, in front of us. There are teachers, directors, students, parents that unfortunately are not here today. It's been an amazing journey. You should, I invite all of you, when you do have time, to show up and see the way these people engage, the work that they have put out there. It's just amazing. A lot of recommendations, a lot of suggestions, a lot of things have changed. And we are implementing those things in our public schools. So without any further ado, Linda Barber.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. It's a funny thing, I think nearly everybody in this room, well, 80% of people in this room have worked on the Equity projects. But to start, I want to show the subgroups. If we can move to the next slide. These are all of the people that have been involved in the various subgroups attached to the Equity Board. As you can see, there's a huge amount of people that meet monthly, as John Kingston said, often for two hours after school. If we can move to the next slide, all of those groups are going to present here tonight. I think we can manage to present in 10 minutes. So I am involved in the Bias and Sensitivity Board work. And there's two components to this work. One of it is new, which is the handbook. The other piece of this is the curriculum audit, which is building off of work that started previously. But our handbook revision process, you'll see that we created this large group, quite diverse and representative, to really bring voices to the work to ensure that our product was going to be as good as possible. We have, John, Aisha, and Carol have been part of this handbook revision guide. But our goal was to reorganize the handbooks for it to be more user-friendly. User-friendly for students and for families. Often, it's alphabetically listed currently and it can be very dense and sometimes very difficult to wedge your way through to find out exactly what it is that you're looking for. So we revised, we looked, our process was that we looked at multiple handbooks to try to get an idea of where it is we wanted to go, what is that we wanted to do. And we landed on revising the handbook so as to create one district-wide guide. And the revision criteria, it's not a big restructuring of information or revision of information, but more a reorganization to make it more user-friendly. But we are looking for, ensuring that it's student and caregiver-friendly. We're also looking to make sure that it's culturally relevant and free of bias as well as that it's written from a restorative justice lens. And then these are our, next slide, our next steps that we plan to do will be to give it to administrators to review the guide for content alignment and consistency. Then we'll take that to school committee for another review. And then the handbook revision task force will implement whatever feedback that we get, translate the copies, and then we'll have it ready to go out to students and families. That's where we'll get family feedback. Given that we want to reorganize this for it to be student and family-friendly, giving it to parents to use and getting feedback about what that process has been like is the best feedback that we feel that we can get. So that's when we'll be implementing or thinking about what are the revisions we need to do. So we go into the next slide. This is the second component of the work that's building on work from previous years. We were tasked with a curriculum audit. So the directors developed alongside their large group a Equity Protocol that looks into curriculum to ensure that it's culturally appropriate. Well, it's actually the criteria is within the protocol, it's way more than that. But they decided to, they developed a protocol, they focused on grade 10 as a pilot to work out the Kingston process. And you'll see here some of the findings from the grade 10 audit. I won't read them, you can read through them, but they have very clearly defined next steps. They're going to share the protocol across departments, develop a curriculum auditing schedule for the district, and then ensure each content area and grade level creates a timeline where the curriculum stands and when it will be evaluated. And then they have a sample there for people to follow. Sorry, I have to rush, I was getting a signal there to speed up. But I'm going to pass on now to the next person, who's part of the Data and Accountability Group.
Thank you for that. Just quickly, my name is Ertan, hello again. This is the Data and Accountability Group I've been a part of for three years now. I started in the eighth grade, I'm now a sophomore. We've done a lot of work done thankfully over the past three years, implementing an EL program at the RMA. At the RMA, along with looking into discipline across the district and reporting with that, as well as affinity groups and implementing that for teachers as well. But this year, we mainly focused on the 2022 RHS graduate survey. So seniors, once they graduate, or right before they graduate, rather, they get a survey and they, they're supposed to answer it. And it basically focuses on, you know, asking, you know, what's supported them? What were some barriers, things like that? And we specifically focused on a bunch of different categories, as you can see up there. EL status, if you're a former EL, race, ethnicity, home language, home country, things like that. We got 48% of RHS graduates that completed the survey. So of course, it's important to look at this. Not completely expansive data, but we, you know, definitely do have data that we did look at. And we specifically focused on prioritizing diverse student voice. So students that, you know, might not be supported, focusing on that as well. So if you go to the next slide. We specifically looked at academic support and some findings that we found were related to advisory. So 50% of students reported that advisory was helpful and made a significant impact in their graduation. And that was 70% for ELs. And it's important to realize that, you know, Bowen, the principal at the high school, has his, you know, group vision of the graduate and they're really focusing on this head-on from multiple aspects, as well as, you know, postgraduate plans, focusing on post-secondary education and specifically kind of like a warning sign for us. Was that a major, like a large portion of students that were undecided were ELs? So it's kind of interesting to look at, you know, how are we supporting these students? Are they getting the support they need? Do they know, you know, what to do with postgraduate plans? And our recommendations are focused specifically on advisory. You know, myself, I have advisory, you know. Not everyone utilizes it the best. So we're trying to focus on, you know, what works for students, what doesn't? How can we create that, you know, for the entire school? As well as integrated student support system for ELs that is under Bowen. He is kind of leading that into the next year. That specific planning for academic advising, college, things like that, as, you know, Ms. Finn talked about earlier. And also engaging with EL students and families through focus groups and interviews to learn more about their goals, barriers they faced, and things like that to kind of find those potential areas to expand that support. If you go on to the last slide. We also focus on social, emotional wellbeing as well. So a lot of students reported COVID and mental, emotional health has been a big impact, as well discrimination and cultural differences. But it's also important to realize that cultural differences are natural. They're not necessarily a bad thing, but they're also, you know, something to look into, as well as outside-of-school factors. So a majority of ELs focused on job, you know, having a job is a significant challenge on their path to graduation. So it's important, when we're looking at these college systems, like Ms. Finn was talking about earlier, that we're making sure that it's through a lens of accessibility and equity for those students that are, you know, on ELs and, you know, representative of the entire student body. So our recommendations are kind of focusing on seeking those diverse and representative student voices to lead these discussions for, you know, workplace development with that new Director of Youth Engagement and Success as well, as well as implementing professional development to focus on culturally responsive practices across the entire district and the high school as well, as well as creating space for students like me to lead our own affinity groups where we can kind of have the agency to feel comfortable with students just like us. So, thank you. Any questions? Yeah. Oh, okay. Yes.
Hi, my name is Carly Livingston. I'm a Special Education Resource Room teacher for kindergarten through third grade at Paul Revere Elementary. And I'm representing the Educator Growth and Professional Development Subcommittee. Based on the Culturally Responsive Look-for Document that was developed by Revere Public Schools, we created a survey in December of 2022 to survey all staff members in Revere Public Schools to identify their strengths and areas for growth based on the Culturally Responsive Look-for Document. In January of 2023, we got about 440 responses, which identified that Indicator 1B of the Culturally Responsive Look-for Document, which is assessment as an area that 29.8% of educators across the district selected as an area for growth. In February and March of 2023, again, we asked our educators within the district to create slides sharing their best practices regarding assessment. Because while it was identified as an area of growth for so many educators across the district, there were also many educators that identified it as a strength. So we wanted to reach into our resources and focus on how we are a district that focuses on collaboration as well. Sorry. I'll keep going, I get distracted easily. In April and May of this year, again, we made another survey, you guessed it, asking educators across the district to reflect on their growth in this Indicator 1B assessment. And it says here that we received 151 responses. As of most recently, we received 257 responses reflecting on their growth through their feedback from the slides that were provided by educators from across the district with their best assessment practices. Based on our survey findings, there was an overlap, like I said, between the identified strengths and areas for growth. Most notably, there were inconsistencies of culturally responsive practices across the district. As you can see here in the picture, it says, please reflect on your growth in this year's Indicator 1B assessment. And we had about 70, or 49% of participants note that they had, you know, four on the scale, from one to four, one to five, that they had some significant professional growth. At the onset of 2023 to 2024, we are going to talk about intentionally, dedicating intentional time to effectively communicate the goals and importance of the Culturally Responsive Look-for Document, which was introduced into our schools as administrators and teachers look for ways that we can be culturally responsive in our classrooms. And we would like to provide educators time to reflect on their equity practices involving specifically this Indicator 1B assessment, as well as the other notable areas of growth that were identified within our surveys. And that can take us to our last slide, which is a mod pod of anonymous feedback from educators from across the district where we asked for reflection and ideas for next steps moving forward into the next year. And my favorite one is at the bottom left corner. It says, if you want growth, give us PD. And so for the next school year, with our work within the Educator Growth and Professional Development Team, we're going to further research and propose examples of required district-wide professional development opportunities for all Revere Public School staff. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chelsea Bramine Friar. I'm an English teacher at City Lab Innovation High School and I am representing the Family Engagement and Community Relations Subcommittee. I think we can all agree that family engagement is an incredibly important factor in terms of success and achievement of students and the whole student. We intend for our work as a subcommittee to impact the ongoing and tireless work of the entire community in terms of increasing and improving family engagement across the district. So last year, we conducted a district-wide family survey, a family liaison survey and a focus group. We utilized this data that we received in order to really help and really look at the work that we did this year. So some of the patterns that we noticed, based off of the data that we received, we noticed some patterns in terms of areas of growth for consistency in terms of communication, not only between the schools and families in terms of their preferred language, but also between schools and amongst grades. We also noticed a need for creating a more welcoming environment across the district as students transition from elementary to high school. And we also would really like to work on how the Equity Teams in schools, each of the schools don't seem to be consistently aligned. So based off of all the data that we received, we actually looked at the Recommendation 1 from the Equity Audit that happened in the district. And we took our Subcommittee and made it into three more Subcommittees. And we focused on a District-Wide Communication Plan, a School Equity Team Initiative to streamline consistency and sustainability, and also an event template. So based off of everything, our recommendations, we're hoping to see the development of a District-Wide Communication Plan to help increase that engagement that involves all stakeholders. We also want to create opportunities for family liaisons to really directly engage with families so they can all learn how to access available resources. We'd like to see the design of a process for sharing event resources across all schools. And we'd like to see alignment and consistency across school-based Equity Teams to ensure more cohesion and concrete outcomes for Equity and Inclusion. So in terms of next steps for our group, we want to continue working on the development of a communication framework. So it can be for the entire district of students, families, staff, and stakeholders. We want to actually research practices that are utilized in different districts and organizations in Revere that utilize multilingual experts in their fields. And we want to reach out to all the school-based Equity Teams to identify the work that they're doing and clarify their roles and how these roles connect to all stakeholders. And we actually worked on creating a template for an event in the district so each school could actually utilize this event template in order to have the same consistency in the events that actually in the events that actually happen in each of the schools throughout the year. So we really want to streamline that process so each school is seeing those types of events for all grades and all students. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is MJ Crossman. I am a fifth-grade math teacher at the Paul Revere. I'm representing the Student Agency Social Emotional Support and Restorative Justice Subcommittee, but really, we're focusing on the Student Agency piece for the last few years and Student Voice. So our goal for the last two years has been to amplify Student Voice across the district. And really, we've been focusing on implementing our show Amplify through Revere TV. And so this was a video clip. I don't think we're able to play it, but it's on YouTube. You could just type in Amplify Student Voice Revere, and you can see the episode. It's a little bit lengthy, but we asked students who were in various equity groups why they joined the group and, you know, why equity is important to them. So we really just want students to be leading this discussion because so often, it's just adults blabbering. You can go to the next slide. So our, you know, recommendations are just going to be continue working on developing the Amplify show. We would like educators to review it during their PGT time, if possible. So that's something we'll probably try to work on next year. We didn't really get to getting that out to the principals this year. Continuing working with Revere TV, they've been really great partners to us, so, you know, developing that relationship further. And then, you know, we kind of were struggling this year to figure out what should we amplify? And we thought, you know, should we have things that we're manufacturing? But we thought, there's already so many great things going on in the district that students are doing, so just finding those little pockets and just putting it on our platform. And so we're actually reaching out to the Student Senate, and they were able to record some videos for us that we're going to put into our next episode coming up. And hopefully, you know, with the episodes in the next coming year, we hope to engage young people in conversations about race and equity. So far, we've kind of touched our toes into that topic, but we'd love for them to lead the conversation and actually educate each other as well. So like I said, our next steps are, just to continue our show, we really hope to recruit more students to our Subcommittee. It's tough because, you know, it's after school and kids have sports and things like that, but we've reached out to the Student Senate. They've been great helping us. We also created an email so that it's at the end of every episode, and students or our teachers can email us with ideas that they have about what they want to put in an episode. So it's really coming from the students, and it's not manufactured by adults. And then, again, we just want to continue having conversations with students about equity and what it means to them and why it's important. Thank you.
I'll just say amazing, amazing, amazing work, everybody.
Thank, thank you so much. Everybody's presentation was just so terrific.
I.
It's a pleasure.
Linda, I'm sorry I rushed you.
Linda has been an amazing addition to our school department. I don't know if you know this, but Linda used to be a middle school principal in Chelsea, and she decided to trade that position for the RJ Practices, which is Restorative Justice Practice, which is a way of life. It's going to be a way of life in our district. So it's no wonder that we're using, we are revising our student handbook through that lens. And she's been, you know, a good addition to our district. Just amazing. And I just want to thank this team for getting it together. This is a wonderful group of educators who really want to see some systemic change in our district. They really want to tackle racial disparities and injustice that exist in our systems. But we want to make sure that we continue to do things to make sure that we level the playing field for everyone, for our students, for our parents, for our staff, to make sure we have our schools, we have an excellent school system to continue to be better and better for everyone. Thank you. I cannot thank you enough. Another time they come, you know, they just work very hard, you know, so they're great people.
Yeah, I just don't want to let the evening go without showing some appreciation because I know how much work has been put into these various facets of the equity plan. I am interested a lot in the parental involvement and what comes of that, what your findings are and what the data shows. I think that is probably one of the most key elements of a child's success, is the fact that their parents are involved. And maybe it's just, you know, there are different emphasis that are put on education and/or different priorities, you know, people have in their own homes. And maybe we just have to adjust our way of thinking and how to best approach them. But I'm just happy that this work's being done. Thank you. I appreciate all that you're doing. It's good work, and it's going to pan out in the long run. So thank you.
Mr. Kingston. I just, I'll thank my daughter publicly. She's part of this group. I hear about it a lot, and I do really appreciate what you're doing because, trust me, I hear it. So, thank you.
You definitely got the raw end by being the last presenter, and we apologize, but you did, and the work is tremendous, and you've got a good group. And that District-Wide Communication Plan is something I think is probably one of the will be a big key factor, because this is where everyone gets lost in the mix. And we, it's just a hodgepodge, like you said, of communication that goes out, the more everyone thinks, because there's such thing as social media, that everyone gets it. You know how it does. People get certain information, they don't, and then it gets worn out because it just fades into the background with everything else. So I'd love to see how that works out, but fantastic work, and thank you for being here. Thank you for staying this long time.
Now just go home. Thank you. Safe drive. Yeah. Thank you.
The next item is hearings. We have the attached school public hearing for school.
Yeah, so can I just say something? Just given my knowledge and understanding of the discussion that's to follow, and my knowledge and understanding of how the Conflict of Interest Law applies to me and my capacity at GACY and the school committee, I am officially recusing myself from the discussion to follow. Then I'll come back when it's done.
Thank you. Ms. Montero so is recused. We'll let you know when you can come back. Okay, so the hearings, this is an open public hearing regarding school choice, which should I read the entire notice?
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay. Public hearing notice is hereby given in accordance with provisions of Section 61 of Chapter 71 of the Massachusetts General Laws that the Revere School Committee will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May 16, 2023, at 6:00 PM or 8:00 PM in the Emmanuel Ferante School Committee Room and via Zoom, located on the first floor of Revere High School, 101 School Street, for the purpose of discussing and voting the enrollment of non-resident students, also known as school choice, in the Revere Public School System. Where this is an open public hearing, I wish, we open this floor up to any, anyone that is in opposition, any opponents to this public hearing or any opponents to this, anyone wishing to speak and not in favor, anyone on Zoom, Ms. Kelly?
There's nobody on the Zoom, no.
Haring and seeing none. I'll close that side of the hearing. And we're going to open this up to proponents, any proponents in the audience and/or on Zoom, not wishing to speak in this public hearing, anyone?
There are none on Zoom, but I'd like to speak to the issue, if I could, for the school committee.
Sure.
This is a motion that is somewhat counterintuitive, how the vote goes, because the vote is framed in such a way, the motion is framed in a way that's almost the opposite of what you want to vote. So the motion that the school committee is about to entertain is required by the state to decide whether or not you want to participate in the school choice program, which would allow students from other districts to attend Revere Public Schools. And the reason that is a challenge for us is, as you all know, our schools are all overcrowded, from the high school straight down to every single one of our elementary schools. And so having more students come into the community when we already don't have enough seats for our own students with the lottery at the middle school level and struggles that we have to get a new high school built, I would recommend that the school committee vote no on the school choice option. The framing of the question is that the, or the framing of the motion is that the Revere School Committee declined to participate in school choice and vote no on allowing non-resident students from other school systems to participate in the wonderful education that is given here in Revere. So vote no on school choice. And if you support what I have just articulated, you would actually vote yes on this motion.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, because oftentimes, the motion is proposed in a negative.
Correct.
So Dr. Kelly, why don't you read that motion that's recommended again? I will move.
Should I close, should I close the side of the public hearing first?
Yes.
I opened it up to the opponents, and this is why I did it backwards. Usually I do proponents because of the way.
Yes.
So now I have it open to proponents.
I believe the process is that you can close that side, and then the committee can make a motion and then have their discussion.
Right. So hearing, the floor is still open for any proponents? Haring and seeing none? We'll close that side of the hearing. Anyone in the school committee wish to make a motion or make a comment?
I'll ask the superintendent to frame the motion for us.
That the Revere School Committee declined to participate in school choice and vote no on allowing non-resident students from other school systems to participate in the wonderful education that is given here in Revere. So vote no on school choice.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Roll call. You need a roll call.
Mrs. Stacy Bronson Rizzo. Mr. Michael Ferante.
Yes.
Mr. John Kingston.
Yes.
Mrs. Aisha Milbury Ellis.
Yes.
Ms. Jacqueline Montero so. Ms. Carol Ty.
Yes.
Acting Mayor Patrick Keefe.
Yes. Motion is passed.
And just a note for the record, that Committee Woman Montero so had excused, had recused herself from the vote.
Okay. Next, reports in subcommittees.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ferante.
We've had two meetings with the budget, Budget One and Budget Two. We're making some progress on it. Our CFO, Matt Cruz, will bring a third budget to us in the next couple of weeks, and hopefully at that point, we'll be able to make the Subcommittee with myself, Mr. Kingston, and Ms. Ty, make a recommendation to the school committee to vote on the budget at the next meeting in June.
Thank you, Mr. Ferante. Any other Subcommittee reports? No? Any motions? Any motions? Motion A to encumber $12,009 for invoice 87970.00024 for Perkins Eastman Architect TPC for February 2023 Professional Services.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Is this a roll call or is it all in favor? Roll call, Mr. Garcia.
Mrs. Stacy Bronson Rizzo. Mr. Michael Ferante.
Yes.
Mr. John Kingston.
Yes.
Mrs. Aisha Milbury Ellis.
Yes.
Ms. Jacqueline Montero so.
Yes.
Ms. Carol Ty.
Yes.
Acting Mayor Patrick Keefe.
Yes. Motion is approved. Motion number two, approve payment in the amount of $12,009 for invoice 87970. It's the same invoice number, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. For Perkins Eastman for February 2023 Professional Services.
So moved.
One second. Great. Mr. Garcia, would you call a roll?
Mr. Stacy. Mr. Stacy Bronson Rizzo. Mr. Michael Ferante.
Yes.
Mr. John Kingston.
Yes.
Mr. Aisha Milbury Ellis.
Yes.
Ms. Jacqueline Montero so.
Yes.
Ms. Carol Ty.
Yes.
Acting Mayor Patrick Keefe.
Yes. Motion has been approved. And the last motion by Mr. Kingston to make the last day of school, June 16, 2023. Mr. Kingston?
I'm not sure of the proper procedure, but I'd like to.
I think that motion is out of order. I don't think that, since we've ever had, we've never had any discussion on that, that I don't think it's proper for us to vote on that today. I don't know. We can ask the superintendent to make a decision on that, but.
Mr., well, Mr. Kingston, while waiting on the superintendent.
What I was going to do is not withdraw the motion, but I would like a substitute motion, if I could be so allowed.
This, we're on Mr. Kingston's motion to make the last day of school, June 16, 2023. He now wishes to withdraw the motion. Should, do we have to vote on withdrawal? Or just, okay, withdraw the motion. And Mr. Kingston, you want to offer a substitute motion?
I would like to make the last day of school on the 20th for students, and staff would come in the 21st for their usual time on the last day of school. It's a very short school day. It's approximately less than three hours, and I've had a number of parents say to me it's difficult for them to make that transition. They're literally dropping their child off, and before they know it, they're coming back to pick them up. I expect, based on conversations with folks, a lot of children don't go to school that day anyway, and I think it will allow, just make lives easier for the parents, and school staff would have some time to do what they need to do without putting in additional time to kind of square away their space before they leave for the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kingston. Mrs. Montero so.
It's my public understanding that we have to reach a certain number of hours in school days, so before we proceed with, I just, my question is, how would this motion impact our legal requirement for student learning time?
I had a similar question, and that was, I guess I was going to ask Ms. Kelly.
So the contracts that we have negotiated over a number of years, not only with the teachers, but with the five other bargaining units that we deal with, allow for some flexibility in regard to the required number of hours, number of days, according to the requirements in Chapter 71. We do 184 student days, 183 student days, 183 and a half, something like that. So we beat it on the days, and we, and the hours come out. We have more than enough hours at the middle of the elementary level. The high school hours end up being very tight. They're right up against their 990 that are required. We have some added complications this year in that the Garfield School was closed for a day, so I don't think that would be enough hours, the six and a half they lost that day, to put them underneath the mark. But it's, you know, the number of hours and the number of days, I think we would be okay with. I struggle with the idea that we have negotiated contracts that have been years and years and years in the making, and sacrifices have been given, and that we would just decide to upend what those contracts are at a random point in any given school year, this one or one in the future or any other one. I think about if we give teachers a day and a half or half a day or whatever the case may be, away from their contractual obligations, how do we emulate that for our custodians, for our secretaries, for our bus drivers? What do we do for our administrators?
I would still, that there would only be students would be off. The teachers would continue to come in that day.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
What is the actual, forget the motion right now, what is the actual last day of school?
21st. Which is. On the 21st.
Right. Which is a Wednesday, and that's what you want to do.
You want to eliminate.
I want, no, no, that's all I said. I'll say the motion again. What I wanted to do. What I wanted to do was not have students come in on Wednesday, that they're in school for less than three hours, that's a fact. And it's difficult for parents to make that turnaround. You drop the student off and less than three hours later, you're coming back to get them. So I would, my, my assumption is, and it's based on some fact, just asking, that it's a, it's a huge attendance day, a lot of kids just don't come to school that day because it, because it's kind of a, you know, inconvenience to the parents to get them there, um, and make arrangements.
Well, I think, I think you-
I have the floor.
I do. So, I'm not saying anything about staff, staff would be required to come in as always, but the students wouldn't. We're over the number of days, um, and we're over the number of days and hours in my, my opinion, I'll do the math with you anytime you'd like, but I just think it, it would, it would just give everyone a little bit of a, um, a break, breather, whatever word you want to use. Um, I, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a big deal, it has nothing to do with the contract, contractually, the, the, the teachers are still coming to school. We're forgiving September 7th, we're forgiving September 19th next year because it's primary day and the teachers are going to have professional development, you said that tonight. So I don't see the difference, other than we're not having professional development on the last day of school. Teachers are going to be required to come to school as, as they are, they just wouldn't be in front of students. That's all. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Uh, I'm looking at the paper in front of me and it says that the last day of school would be June 16th.
That was his original motion.
That was the original motion, which I, you left.
Okay, that's what I missed, all right.
I'm backed on the 16th.
So what did you change it to?
The 20th, last day would be the 20th, in essence eliminating for students the 21st.
But teachers would come in and report.
Right.
So the contract says that their last day of school for teachers will be released at a particular time of day, I don't have the exact language, um, in, in my head. Um, we've had negotiations with them, we've had questions in the past with them where I have suggested we eliminate that last day of school because like you said, it's extremely short, um, and not, an awful lot happens on that day. I do think a lot of kids come in and say goodbye to their friends and goodbye to their teachers and things like that, a lot of, a lot of that happens. Um, the teachers refuse to accept that and identify in their contract the provision that delineates the length of time for their last day of school. So, uh, we can't change that, you know? Um, I, I've not had any complaints from parents that have said, please just don't let kids come to school that day. I've had complaints from teachers saying that, uh, but I know that for a lot of parents, uh, it's a few more hours in the day that they can either get some final things done or don't have to pay for childcare or, uh, whatever the case may be. The kids still start at the same time that they do every other day that school is open, so even if it enables a parent to get to work and have a care provider pick their child up a little bit earlier than regular, it's still three hours of daycare that parents aren't having to pay at the elementary level. And that's where it's the greatest concern. The high school kids, it's a makeup day for, uh, exams and work that they might have missed, so they're typically not in school anyway. Um, it's really just the little ones and I, I think more of the parents who rely on us in some sense to make sure their children are cared for, um, I worry about them a little bit more than I worry about the parents who are situated such that it's an annoyance to bring their child to school for a few days. They certainly have, I mean, for a few hours, they certainly have the option to not do that if they so choose, but I think removing that flexibility from the working parent would be a greater challenge than not.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Any, anyone else wish to speak on the motion?
I, I can just say, for years of negotiating contracts on both sides of the table, that you set the days and then you, you, that's the calendar. Remember, when you're in a, it's a give and take when you're in negotiations, that you, you know, might, we, we, one of the things we gave was that we'd never come to school on a hanging Monday, you know, that was, that was the give that we gave in, in this contract. And, um, you know, uh, I just think we should follow what the contract says.
Wait a minute, hold on. We're not, we do, excuse me.
Mr. Ferante.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're not reducing the teachers' obligations. Alls Mr. Kingston wanted to do was not have the kids come in for the half a day. That's the crutch of his substitute motion, nothing to do with the teachers, they're going to, let me finish, please. They'll, they just want them to come in. The teachers have to come in, they said a half a day that day, they got 11:30, 12 o'clock, I'm not sure what time they get out. So the teachers still have to be here, his point is he just didn't want the kids to come. That's all his substitute motion was. You can do whatever, but that's all he's doing, not, not do with the teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Ferante. Ms. Kelly?
Uh, just, just to say, and Ms. Ty might even know this better than I would, um, I don't know when that day was negotiated with the union. I'm sure there was a lot of back and forth around what the length of time would be. I believe it says three hours and five minutes after the first bell for students or something. I'm going to say, uh, I'm tired, I was going to say crazy, I don't know, something odd, odd like that. But I'm sure there were some gives and takes that brought that day into being and making it be such a short day and the insistence that it was with students. And I don't know right now what the give and take were, were for that day, um, but there were contract negotiations made, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, yeah, I mean, yes, I was part of the negotiation. And the negotiation in the contract is, is a, you know, that's what you come to. And I don't know, I mean, we don't ask for anything more than that, um, just ask for that. So, I don't support it.
I would second, I'll second Mr. Kingston's motion.
I, um, well, you, just, yeah, I, one thing that I think that seems to get, be getting lost in this, and I'm not necessarily, now I'm confused, okay? Um, and that's okay, I'm going to admit to some of my shortcomings. Um, this, Mr. Kingston's motion doesn't seem to impact the teachers, although my, my fear, of course, now is if the students don't show up, why do the teachers have to show up?
Well, they clean up their desk, clean up their classroom.
So, but, you know, they may, they may feel that they don't need to because the students aren't there and they may be clean, maybe they'll clean the classroom up the day before. Uh, so it just makes me wonder and, and then, um, what, what does this set for precedent? I'm more so based on the precedent set for the amount of school days required, um, which I, again, I, it does seem like we're going to be in a, still in a safe place there, but that's, that's really where it comes down to. Mr. Ki, Mr. Kingston's motion doesn't speak to giving the teachers a day off, it's just to have the students not have that day. So just to clarify, and I'm, I'm not, hopefully I'm speaking correctly. Yep, thank you.
Let me just say this, there are teachers who come long before school opens, an entire week, sometimes two weeks, people are in there. There are teachers who stay long after that and those teachers are always upset with the ones who don't do any of that. I just say that, I've had a lot of experience in that and, uh, so my theory has been, ever since we've had that, look, everybody knows what the contract is. If the contract is that, then that's what you stick to for the year.
Call the roll.
Mr. Stacy Bronson Rizzo. Mr. Michael Ferante.
No.
Mr. John Kingston.
Yes.
Mrs. Aisha Milbury Ellis.
Yes.
Ms. Jacqueline Monterosso.
No.
Ms. Carol Ty.
No.
Acting Mayor Patrick Keefe.
I'm going to vote present, it's irrelevant at this point anyway. Thank you. The motion fails. And, um, next item up, unfinished business. Mr. Kingston, do you have some?
No, I have something unfinished business.
Okay. Any unfinished business? Okay. Next item, new business. Mr. Kingston?
In, in light of Ms. Monterosso's, um, I don't know how to say it, in light of her, um, job requirements and how it affects the school committee, I would strongly encourage the school committee to get a legal opinion so that we make sure that she doesn't vote on, vote on anything that she shouldn't. I'm sure she knows the law, but I want to make sure that the committee's covered and that we don't make, and don't make a mistake. And no disrespect to you, I just want to be, so we all know in case, you know, you, I'm not saying you're not paying attention or not, but it's just so that we would know, okay, yes, this is okay and this isn't. I think it's important in this instance, I really do, and I, I think we'd not be doing our, our duty to not have that in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kingston. And just for the record, um, she can get an ethics decision daily? And I'm assuming you already did? Good.
Yeah, so to provide, I have a written opinion, which is the written statement from the State Ethics Commission. I've also consulted with DESI Legal and I also know that we have other members on the school committee that conflict of interest applies to them in their own jobs, so I think, uh, it's a great point that you brought up and if we're going to look for it for me, then we should have legal counsel for all members that also have to work with conflict of interest, so we have that written opinion.
I, I don't want, I, I don't want you to get the idea that I'm-
Oh, no, I think it's good to have backup for every-
When you reclusive yourself, I'm saying to myself, I, I, I'll be honest, I didn't know why specifically, I, so I was just looking for some clarification. If you already have it, that's fine, I'm not looking to spend money, we don't need to. I just was afraid of us getting into, you take, you vote on something, you know, innocently not knowing, and then all of a sudden it becomes a problem for us down the road, that's all.
I agree, yeah, I mean, not knowing is not an excuse if someone like goes into like overlapping things, I know that's not an excuse in law. I'm also happy to, uh, share the statement, it's, it's my livelihood, so I'm definitely checking my Ts and all.
Thank you, no, it was no slight at you, I didn't mean it that way. I was just worried about us if we did something that was incorrect and, you know, a month later someone challenges us on something and we didn't do our job.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
It's, it's a great point, uh, Mr. Kingston, and the, the one funny thing that you see in city government is there's always going to be some form of overlapping, you know, conflict, whether it's a family member working in the school or the city council, having a, a, a mother, father, sister, brother that might be working in the schools or the police department or TPW, et cetera. Uh, but I do know, because we've experienced this with the city council, that, uh, there is an on-call ethics, uh, attorney that can answer those questions on the moment, uh, so it's more, it's just important that, there's a self-check here that I'm sure Mrs. Monterosso does not want to put herself into any harm's way or the city council or school committee in harm's way, so those decisions, when she comes up and sees the, you know, her job will be to make sure she reviews the, the order for the day and, and is, is prepared. Uh, and if we ever do come across those topics, I think it's important for us to self-police and make sure that if we have to, respectfully call each other out to make sure that we're doing this the right way, we always should. Uh, hiring attorneys might not be, you know, but this is, this is a great point, Mr. Kingston, I, I believe.
And if I, if I can just add, um, I spoke to the committee member earlier today and we talked about how we could, um, look to each other for support. One of the things that, one of the main frameworks around, uh, what she needs to recuse herself from are issues that are reportable to the Department of Education. And so one of the things that I have to do by June 1st every year is report to them what your vote was on the school choice decision. And that's why she has to recuse herself from that conversation because I have to report that to DESI. And so between the two of us, I think we have a pretty good handle on what gets reported, what doesn't get reported, what is a local decision and what is a, um, state decision. So I feel pretty confident that we'll, we'll be good in that area.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Are you eligible to vote on our budget?
Yes, oh, yes, I am.
That was one of my questions, because I'm on the wisdom means, I was concerned. And please, I don't want you to, I don't want anyone to think that this, I was singling someone out or trying to be discriminatory or any way, shape or form, I was just concerned if, I didn't want something bad to happen down the road and someone say to me, you should have looked into that, what were you thinking? And I, I don't, I don't like Monday morning quarterbacking.
You're doing your job, committee man, Kingston, I know where I think you are.
Mr. Kingston, they might say it anyway. Okay, great. Uh, any other new business? No? Nothing in an executive session? Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're in, we're in adjournment. Have a great night, thank you very much.